I know this says knock a gavel, not bang a gavel. I'm gonna bang it.
I would like to call the committee of the whole meeting of January 22, 2025, to order. Good evening, everyone. My name is Anna Murray, councillor and chair of the Planning and Economic Development Committee. I would like to begin this evening's meeting by reading a safety notice. In the event of an emergency, please evacuate council chambers to the nearest exit through the chamber doors and obey all instructions given, and if assistance is required, please see the deputy clerk. Once you have evacuated the building, please gather in the front parking lot outside of Town Hall. Please ensure that your cellphone is on silent or turned off, and the Town of Lincoln Committee of the Whole Meetings are posted on our YouTube channel. Closed captioning is available on all of our videos by selecting the closed captioning button on the bottom right of the video. Members of council are in attendance, in person and remotely, with regrets from councillor Russell and councillor Reimer. We also have staff in attendance, and we have representatives from the Niagara SPCA also in attendance this evening. Welcome. Are there any declarations of interest? Seeing none, I'll move on to confirmation of the agenda. Do members have any amendments to the order of the agenda? Item number five is statutory public meetings. We have no statutory public meetings this evening. Moving on to our consent agenda, inclusive of the Housing Select Committee minutes of September 10, 2024, and Heritage Advisory Committee minutes of November 14, 2024. Would any members of committee like to remove an item from the consent agenda to discuss? All right, so then, there being no further discussion, I have a motion moved by councillor Mickeliffe that all items listed under the heading of Consent Agenda for Wednesday, January 22, 2025, be adopted as recommended: the Housing Select Committee minutes of September 10, 2024, and the Heritage Advisory Committee minutes of November 14, 2024. I will now ask our deputy clerk to please open the vote.
Thank you, Chair. That vote is now open. Councillor Rajima, may I have your vote, please?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. And Madam Mayor, may I have your vote, please?
Support.
Thank you. And I'll close that vote. And that carries. Thank you, Chair.
Great. So with that, we will now begin the Planning and Economic Development Agenda. 7.1 is delegations. We have no delegations for the Planning and Economic Development Committee Agenda. Item 7.2 on our agenda is reports. We will now consider item 7.2.1 PD-02-25 Municipal Law Enforcement 2024 Year-End Report, which will be followed by a presentation from the Niagara SPCA. The manager of municipal law enforcement will now provide a presentation. Mike, thanks for joining us. Please go ahead.
Good evening. And through you, Chair, thank you for taking the time to review the municipal law enforcement year-end review, and I'm just wanting to provide you an overview of some of that information. Some of the things I want to talk about are staffing, some of the successes identified through MLE, complaint stats, parking stats, and a forecast for 2025. Municipal law enforcement with the Town of Lincoln, we have three full-time officers, and we had a part-time officer, a shared administrative assistant, and myself. A challenge to this last year in 2024 was, I apologize for the term "loss" of a part-time officer. It wasn't a loss so much as the officer had to take maternity leave at some point during the year. So at one point during the year, they were no longer able to work on the road. So there's workplace accommodation for the officer inside in an office setting, more an administrative role and follow-up role. Unfortunately, what that means is that the demands were, there were more demands placed on the three remaining full-time officers for call response, complaint investigation, and parking enforcement. I will note that a positive in all that is that in December of this year, 2024, we were successfully completed the hiring of two part-time officers, one in the contractual 12-month position for the officer that's off on maternity leave, and the second is a permanent part-time position. The training and equipping of these officers is taking place now. Successes I'd like to talk about, there's always a lot of issues in regards to clean yards throughout the municipality, and there was, an example of a real large success was a large agricultural area zone property in the rural area with outdoor storage that went against the bylaws that we have. And that was a large-scale investigation that took a lot of time, a lot of hours, to gain compliance. And after a property that stood in that position for in excess of 10 years, the surrounding residents have seen drastic improvement on that property. And a lot of that I will attribute to the property owners themselves that worked diligently with the municipal law enforcement officer who was assigned to gain compliance in that matter. There's also a large-scale investigation about an abandoned orchard, vineyard that had been abandoned by the company that was the owner, in ownership of it. And unfortunately, when the vines are not cared for, not sprayed, not pruned, not trimmed, they can become diseased, and that is a concern for neighboring properties. And that speaks right to our bylaws that we have in place to protect those. That was a large, large investigation, a lot of time and hours put into that. The OMAFRA needs to be involved in that to, for an expert to come down and conduct inspections of the vines as well to determine their state. And the works to comply when the ownership failed to do so is, I will say, is a very intrusive thing. There's a lot of machinery and people that have to go onto the property and disrupt the land in order to not only cut the vines but remove them, remove the rootstock, the wires, the trellis, and the post. It's, it's not an easy operation, and when you're talking acreage, it is a lot of work, and the officers work diligently to get that done. And I also note that the successful prosecution by a construction company in relation to construction-related noise that took place. There were two successful guilty pleas for charges laid in that, in that area. And I will speak to noise complaints as it relates to noise exemption permits and say that the successes. I will note that there was a dramatic decrease in the amount of noise complaints related to noise exemption permits where hosting properties were having wedding, wedding receptions or concerts where it was affecting neighboring properties. To the extent that there weren't complaints received last year that were directly related to the noise from the concerts or from the noise events that had, that were investigated, there were some communications, but there was nothing. And I, I attribute that to the work that went on behind the scenes by myself and my team in collaboration both with the, the hosting events, venues, and the neighboring properties, communication, consultation, trying to work to mitigate noise, working with people, making sure there's effective communication. And it resulted in the successes we saw. In the, the year-end report pages six, eight, six to eight and 12, in regards to received complaints, in 2024, we had 858. In 2023, we had 897. So a slight drop in overall recorded reports. However, please keep in mind, as I, as I described earlier, we also had a decrease of an officer that would be involved. So although there may be approximately 30 less complaints received in total that are recorded there, the total number of reports and investigations fell over a less amount of officers to take on more workload. Orders issued, 62, and notices issued 20 in the, in the same timeframe through the year of 2024. In this as well, parking projects and large, large file investigations attributed to additional complaints. And some of those were not recorded individually within our system, so that may account as well for some of the lower notable, noted totals. Received complaints, the top issues, parking. Over the overall stats, 384 were parking complaints. 162 were clean yards complaints. Noise complaints attributed for 42, property standards 33. Site alt and site alteration and zoning were lower in the, in the low to mid twenties. Parking enforcement notices issued. In 2024, there were 629 penalty infraction notices. People like to call them parking tickets issued. Same time in 2023, there were 650. Again, a slight decrease. Please keep in mind, as I've expressed a couple of times, we also had one less officer. So that's enforcement that actually was carried over by three officers for in excess of eight months out of the year, as opposed to four in the previous year. We've started trying to keep track of as much, if not all, of the penalty infraction notices. And I note that 462 were issued proactively, which means that's self-initiated or self-driven enforcement, whereas there was only 162 that were related to reactive, where it was complaint-driven. For fines issued, the totals, my apologies, $24,810 total fines issued. Payments received this year, $17,275, and the total owing, including municipal fees, is still in excess of $12,310. Now, some of that is just the timeframe of the year with, on people that have not paid their tickets. Some is because they've gone too into the AMP's aging process where there's been time given. They haven't made payment, and now there's a notice given out. And a lot of it actually is when they're in arrears and they haven't made the payment, they've been given their notice to remind them. And now it's going to plate denial process. So that's a process where we send batch information to the Ministry of Transportation, and they do plate denials on the plates that are listed from the penalty infraction notices. So those monies are then collected as people try to renew their driver licenses or renew their licenses in general. Ticket disputes. So screenings in 2024, there was 94. I am the screening officer appointed to, by the town. So 94 screenings. Of those, 28 were affirmed, 31 were amended, and 35 withdrawn. I, I will say, so this is people that have requested dispute of the allegation of their, their parking offense. They have a process in place through the AMP's process. They see a screening officer. They provide information to the screening officer for consideration. And then I look at all of that. I look at the ticket issued, the evidence of the officer, the photos of the officer would take, the provisions within the bylaw, and then looking at all the information in its totality, I'd make a determination based on that. The, the, what they provide me as an explanation is taken in consideration, and it can result in either amending the set fine, so reducing it somewhat, or a withdrawal. The withdrawals can take place because of financial situation. A request for leniency based on the lack of awareness. It can be a withdrawal because of the circumstances surrounding it that they provide information for. I will give an example that during a snow clearing, snow, keep it clear event, or a snow event, when people are required to have their vehicles off their municipal streets. Some people find it extra parking. Some have gone to where they're parking in the lower half of their driveway where they may be extended onto the grass portion, or they may have, be partially onto the road. And where they're making the attempts to get off the road, if a ticket was issued for parking out of Boulevard or parking on other areas of land, it could be deemed, if they provide the explanation that they were trying to adhere to the parking provision for a snow clearing, that we take that into account, and it could be either amended or withdrawn. As I look, as we look forward for municipal law enforcement, the additional part-time officer to complement the strength staff, we actually have two part-time officers, one to replace the officer that's off on a leave right now, and the second one came into effect also due to the short-term accommodations by law that we have in place at this time. They will complement the staffing strength. It will, it, it does provide coverage Monday to Saturday into the evening hours as well, which is something that we haven't been able to consistently do due to sickness or vacation. And it will, it will lessen the demand on the three full-time officers. There is an, there is an anticipated ticket revenue increase from this. Having more officers on the street should be a common acceptance that there could be more ticket enforcement. And when we add that with the fact that the officers will be able to attend more areas, there'll be more officers that are able to attend after hours. After, after business, normal business hours for parking enforcement. We do receive complaints where it's been after normal business hours, and there may, may not be an officer working into the evening that shift. Now we will have coverage until at least 8:00 PM through the, the normal times of the week. We do have the short-term accommodations by law that's in effect, and enforcement will start as of March 25, 2025. My officers are being, they are reviewing the bylaw. We have had meetings. We had one just today talking about the enforcement process and what that looks like and how we would be approaching it. There's an invitation of, implementation of a new ticketing software and tools. G-Tecna will be replacing our current system, which is Ticket Tracer, long overdue, and we're looking forward to that. It's a digital platform for us. The officers will be able to issue tickets from their phone in a portable printer, an app on their phone in their portable printer, which many municipalities have gone to. A lot of large municipalities use this, use this platform as well. It's very well-received. There'll be an ability to take the photo, photographic evidence and actually apply that to the parking ticket as well. So people will be getting all that at the same time. Helps on disclosure afterwards as well. It's a quicker system, and there's also a GPS component. So the officers can share the information between units so that one officer can attend and start with a 24-hour process for parking enforcement. And if another officer is the one that's working next day, they can verify that information using the GPS coordinates and pull it up on their own phone. We are drafting schedules as well to include various bylaws into the AMP's bylaw to allow for enforcement. The first schedule that we have in there is already the short-term accommodation, and we are now in the process of adding clean yards, the noise control, the signed bylaw, open-air burns and fireworks. That way, we'll be able to issue penalty notices for those as well instead of going through a more rigorous or onerous process. This will be quicker, easier for enforcement, and there'll be more information gathered at the, on the outset. Thank you for listening, and I turn it back for questions.
Thank you very much, Mike. Lots of good news stories. Does, do any members of committee have questions to ask? We'll start with councillor Timmers.
Thank you very much. Through you to Mr. Barkley. So interesting about, good news about the noise complaints. However, I do have a question. I just need a little bit of clarification. I thought I heard you say that last year there were zero noise complaints from wineries with concerts or events occurring. Did I hear that accurately?
Through you, Chair. Thank you for the question. To clarify, there were no corroborated complaints where there was corroborating evidence to support the allegation that there was a noise violation that took place. There were some that caused us to have further communications with the winery or the hosting property, but nothing that resulted in a charge or any further information that would lead to an investigation.
Okay, well, that, that is good news. Okay, so just around the noise, the noise complaints. So on the Niagara escarpment lands, when there's noise complaints, our bylaws are enforced fully? Would that be a correct statement? Or are they outside of our bylaws?
Through you, Chair. That's, thank you for that question. It's a, it's twofold. We can enforce our noise bylaw, but it's also, if you're talking about Niagara escarpments, so it's the NEC. That would be something that would also be deferred to the NEC. If it's something where they have, for example, a property that may have a permit through the NEC or an authorization to host events on their properties, that would be something that the NEC would take carriage of and do the enforcement of any complaints related to noise, parking, excessive amount of people, anything that comes in that. We would support them, and we can gather information as well, but we would ultimately be directing towards themselves.
Okay, well, that's, that's good to know. Thank you. Through you, Chair. So just, just one more question around that. So if a complaint comes in, it's Niagara escarpment lands, and the complaint comes to a Town of Lincoln bylaw, are you attending or you're passing that on to Niagara escarpment commission? Do you attend this, the location?
Through you, Chair. Thank you. If it's something that's ongoing while the officers are working, they would attend to gather information, confirm what's going on, and record that information. If it's something that's happening after the fact, maybe something that we follow up to determine where the property is or where it's situated, but we then be following up with the NEC.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that clarification, because it's, it's a little confusing when you're looking at both sides. And Madam Chair, do I have one more question, or are my, are my other questions?
You know what? It's the first time back since Christmas. I'll give it to you.
Okay, great. So this is a really quick one. It's, it kind of falls in the same category. It's around fireworks. So I know we have a bylaw restricting fireworks that are only to be certain days and certain holidays. But we are hearing fireworks pretty much on every holiday, right up to New Year's. We had fireworks after midnight, and I received complaints from neighbors. So just wondering, what are, what are you hearing? Are there a lot of, is this a regular occurrence? A lot happening with people letting off fireworks all year round?
Through you, Chair. I can say that without digging into the stats, I don't believe that municipal law enforcement receives a large quantity of complaints in regards to fireworks. We have received some. Generally, they're after the fact. Hard to then follow up and investigate other than going to the property and speaking to the property. It's also something we speak with the fire department as well, about as well. But our, my office itself, I know there haven't been any charges laid against operators that have used fireworks, nor have we received numerous amounts of complaints about that.
Okay. That's a difficult one. By the time you got there, it'd be well over. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, councillor Timmers. Councillor Patriona.
Thank you, Chair Murray. Thanks, Mike, for your report. You had mentioned about the changing in the hours. So on the bottom of page 14 of 15 of the report, you said you'll be adjusting the hours from first week of May till the end of October. So what are those operational hours going to be, if you don't mind me asking?
Through you, Chair. Thank you. Yes, as we did last year during the peak timeframe for events, concerts, and so forth, we'll be adjusting the hours so the officers will be working till 10:00 PM at night instead of the 8:00 PM that is typically offered throughout the remainder of the year.
Okay. And then what time will, will, like, say, the first shift start in the morning?
8:00 PM, 8:00 AM, my apologies.
Okay. Okay. So thank you very much. And I wanted to ask this question last year when you were here, but I was chairing, and we had tons of questions. So what's a typical day in the life of MLE? So like, is it, do we, do we get together first thing in the morning, and you kind of give the officers marching orders? Or do we have hotspots that we, we track? Like, we know we get a lot of issues. Councillor Burnet and myself, I get tons of calls about school parking, right? Parking on curves, just, just utter disobedience of parking regulations and letting their kids out into live lanes of traffic, right? Even where we've had officers, you know, trying to be driven over. So what's, what's your typical day? What's, what's that look like for us?
Through you, Chair. I'm gonna try to answer. I think there's quite a few things in there, so my, my apologies. Typical day, the officers come in, they'll review what's within the inbox, so that the email inbox, people that make online submissions or leave voicemail messages after hours, it's, it's gone into the MLE inbox, we call it, within the Microsoft Outlook Express, and they'll review those, determine what's there, then they can prioritize those. I look at those. I will assign specific ones to specific officers. There's regular communication to identify areas that are repeat or consistent issues. Those ones are identified, and the officers are requested to attend in specific areas. They follow up any reports or investigations they have ongoing, make any phone calls that are required before they leave. Then they attend, they head out on the road, and they do, unless they have an appointment or, or a specific investigation, then they start by, typically by driving through different areas for parking enforcement. And that's the first thing they're doing, and it's a proactive approach. I can, I will try to speak as well to what you raised about the concerns in the parking in the school areas. That is typically a difficult situation to be involved with where there's to do enforcement. A lot of it comes down to just a visual presence, because unfortunately, the people aren't there long enough for the officers to stop, issue it, write out a, write out a penalty infraction notice, get it to the vehicle before they drop their kids off and left. So it becomes a frustrating situation for the officers. What we have attempted to do in the past is have visual presence with two or three officers there in an area to ensure that the area's remains clear that's not supposed to be parked in. And there's a lot of education that goes on that. We've communicated with the schools to try to have them provide newsletter, within their newsletters, communication regards to the parking. But it's a difficult, difficult situation. I can say that I'll speak to the fact that this is something that happens in, in most municipalities within the school zones. A lot of families elect to drop their students off instead of having them walk any distance, and that just creates a more congested area.
Okay, yeah, because I, and through you, Chair. I mean, that's, that's kind of the frustration from some of the parents, right? When you're there, everyone's observant, and the minute you leave, you-know-what breaks loose. And it just goes back to bad behavior. So that's, that's the, that's the frustration. So third question, if I may, Madam Chair, with respect to parking infractions, Mike. So 629 in total, parking where prohibited, 214, I like that. But facing or stopping and parking the wrong way doesn't seem particularly heinous to me, and is probably one of the ones that gets appealed and gets tossed out and actually raises the ire of the resident, right? So you, do you know what I mean? And, but, but contractors do it all the time, and they drop an orange cone, and they think it's fine. And blatantly, not park the wrong way, but under a sign that says, "No parking." I'm gonna park there. I put an orange cone. I'm okay. Explain to me the difference, please.
Through you, Chair. Thank you. I accept the challenge. Park facing the wrong way or park on the wrong side of the street. Just to put that in perspective, in order for a vehicle to park facing the wrong way, they're actually driving into incoming traffic. So they're driving into a through lane that goes in the opposite direction to park their vehicle there. That's, that's a flagrant disregard, not only just with the parking bylaw, but also under the Highway Traffic Act. So it is, where some people may minimize that, it is serious. And in order, in order then to leave that parking spot, you then have to go across and against the flow of traffic to get it back into your traffic lane in order to drive forward. So it, it is, there is a very large possibility that can cause more of an issue than what people believe it is just by parking on the wrong side of the street. Again, I will also reiterate, I will also iterate that parking, park facing the wrong way is not a isolated provision within the municipal, municipality of Lincoln. You're not allowed to do that unless it's a one-way street in any municipality in Ontario. So this is not a new provision. This is not a one-off provision that's just with the Town of Lincoln. This is everywhere, and I would suggest it's across Canada. You can't go on, onto the opposite side of the street and park your vehicle there unless you are on a one-way street and you're going in the same direction. That's that part. Now, speaking in regards to contractors, they are permitted to park on the street to load and unload. They're not supposed to be staying, staying parking there. If they do so, and it's brought to the attention of the officers, the officers do go. A lot of times, I will say that they do attempt to have communication with the contractors to have them move their vehicles first, give them a period of time, and then they'll re-attend. If, I do know, I do know on two occasions that I can think of within the last six months where it did end up resulting in penalty infraction notices being issued to the contractor because they were parked and they wouldn't move their vehicle. The rest of the time, that education does, the engagement with the, with them does typically get them to move, but I can understand the frustration with the other residents.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. And you know what? So, so if it is a violation of the Highway Traffic Act, so then those wouldn't get thrown out. When they come to appeal, you would give them that explanation to say, hey, because you know what? You're going to get the, well, it's a resident- You're going to get the, well, it's a residential street, there was no traffic and, do you know what I mean? Or is that, is that cut and dried, that's not getting thrown out?
Through you Chair. I can't speak to every circumstance, but what I will say is, I, as a screening officer, I have to look at the totality of the information, which includes the explanation provided by the appellant.
Okay.
So other than just the allegation that's made, then there's also the opportunity for them to explain their version of the events or the reasoning behind that. And that's why I take you into account. I would say there, that I can't think of anything offhand for that allegation that would have been withdrawn or amended.
Beautiful. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much Counsel Patriva. Mayor Easton, you did have your hand raised, but I noticed it is no longer up. Did you want to speak? No, you're, thank you very much. Counsel Rajima?
Thank you Chair Murray. Thank you for your presentation. I have a question about the upcoming enforcement related to short-term accommodations. So my question is about, you know, I have people saying to me, well, with short-term accommodations coming on, there's going to be issues with parking on my street. And with the additional dwelling units that the provinces is saying that we need to allow within existing dwellings, I have people saying to me that's going to create problems with parking on my street. So I'm thinking of, in the future, you getting a parking complaint on a street. How will you know? How will we know? Or will we know? Or do we have any way of tracking or do we want to track whether that parking complaint is related to an existing short-term accommodation? Do you, are you sort of relying on the person making the complaint to say there's a short-term accommodation operating out of that unit there? And that's why we're seeing these cars parked there when they shouldn't be parked there? So I guess my question is, do you anticipate knowing if any parking complaints that you get are related to any future short-term accommodations? Yeah.
Through you Chair. Thank you for the question. Parking as it relates to short-term accommodations will be difficult and there will not be a direct or straightforward way for the officers to identify or allocate a vehicle to a certain property, nor can they do so now. The officers don't have the ability to run a license plate like a police officer would. So to gather that information is an administrative function that we have to do outside of the officers while they're in attendance at the vehicle. It's timely, there's a cost involved for the municipality to request that plate information to go, so it's not something that can happen right at the time. Yes, the officers would take the information if a person's calling in a parking complaint and they say, I know that the house across the street from me is a short-term accommodation. They have a license, but I see people coming and going, they're parked on four spots, there are prohibited parking, and I seen them all take luggage and they've gone into the house. That would direct the officers a little bit more with that information, but there is no way for us to attribute it and corroborate that it's with that property. So they would be parking investigations that would be unrelated or cannot be directly related to the short-term accommodation.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Rajima, can I just interrupt for a moment? Director Bruder has a comment that he'd like to add in conjunction to that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Madam Chair. I just wanted to clarify too, I think it's a good question and as Mr. Barkway just commented on it, it's hard for the officers to identify, I think from their point of view, they're going to be looking at what the restrictions are generally speaking on the roadways and what's within our purview, looking at things like signage and whatever restrictions are in the area. But I did want to add also that when it comes to our short-term accommodations, our framework for those and additional residential units for that matter, we do have parking requirements that have to be met onsite as well. So when a short-term accommodation comes in for a license, we're going to be making sure we actually require kind of a, as part of an overall site plan, that will include a bunch of things. One of those will be the designated parking areas. So we're hoping by virtue of requiring parking spaces for, it's one space per guest room, there's an ability to ensure that the required parking is accommodated onsite. And for additional residential units, we've also included that requirement as well, that while it is true that more, you know, more permissions are provided now for those units, there still is the requirement of an additional parking space. So we've taken those measures as well. I just wanted to highlight that.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah, that makes sense. I know that. You can't just say, okay, I'm going to have this additional dwelling unit in my basement or these two additional dwelling units. You have to demonstrate that you have the parking related to those units. So, and I don't see it being municipal law enforcement's job to track all that information. I was just kind of thinking ahead and I was curious, because I know, I think we're going to get those kinds of questions. So I mean, we've put everything, we've put zoning in place, we have bylaw there to enforce the zoning and that's how we deal with that. So another question, Madam Chair. Also, further to that, what kind of items do you foresee receiving concerns about or having to enforce under the short-term accommodations, upcoming short-term accommodations bylaw? I'm just, I haven't really thought it out. So from your role, what do you see coming other than parking?
Through you Chair. Thank you for the question. My anticipation is first the investigation into the unlicensed properties that are continuing to advertise and host the short-term accommodation properties. Those, we have a bylaw in place, we have a licensing bylaw in place, there's been a period of time, six months, for people to apply for their licenses and as of March 25th, we will now start looking at the identified properties that have not gone through the licensing process or not in the application stage of obtaining licensing, but are still promoting. And they would be the first ones that would be experiencing enforcement through my office.
That makes sense. That might be the thing that's taking up most of your time initially and potentially complaints like, you know, neighbors saying there's only supposed to be one unit in that place, yet I see three or four cars coming and going and multiple people coming and going. And I mean, let's hope we don't hear that, but that's great. I don't have any questions further. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much Counselor. Counsel Mikulak, you're next in the queue.
Thank you very much Chair. Through you too, Mike. So I'm looking at the successes and I want to make sure these are successes, not just from an optical perspective, but like when we talk about abandoned orchards, noxious weeds, this sort of thing. You know, like you mentioned you had representatives or consultants from OMAFRA, you have, you know, who pays for that? Who, does that get tacked on to the fine? Does that, like when we're paying for consultants, when we're paying for proof or providing evidence from professionals, does that fall, does that expense fall on the person that's getting penalized or ticketed?
Through you Chair. Thank you for the question. I'll speak specifically to this instance in this one that you brought up. That property, the involvement by OMAFRA is done through a working collaboration, so there's a working agreement that takes place with municipalities with OMAFRA. They come out and they will conduct an investigation in accordance, in accompanying the municipal law enforcement officer onto the property and conduct the search or the inspection of the vines or the orchard to determine if it's diseased, if it's, what state it's in. They provide a report to us and there has not been a fee associated to those. Now, the contracted work to gain compliance, yes, that is contracted by the town to gain compliance when the property ownership does not do so. And then those costs are then put on to the municipal tax roll for that property to be remitted through that way.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. I just want to make sure that, I think if the property owner is aware that this is what's coming and this is what's going to happen and you're going to pay and you're not going to escape paying and you're actually, you're going to pay with interest. I think it's 1.5% a month. So I think that, I think if that is made clear to these offenders, that would promote a quicker response. That would be my thought. Because when I'm looking at these abandoned orchards, like I think you only have to trim 10 meters or something away from a residential area. Am I correct on that or?
Through you Chair. That circumstance we're talking about isn't about a vacant land. We're talking about, this was a vineyard. So this is a planted vines in the ground with trellis and posts over many acres. So we're talking about an entire vineyard that had to be removed. What you were, I think what you were speaking to then is, would be more an agricultural field. And yes, a farm would not have to mow the entire field, they would have to do a buffer strip, a boundary around, to the joining properties in the street.
Okay. And then another question I have is, with respect to that, like court time. Counsel Patriva talked about a day in the life of a bylaw officer and there's a day in your life. How many hours do you think you spend a year in court? I'm guessing that it would fall under your responsibility to deal with these sorts of litigious matters.
Through you Chair. I haven't had to attend court myself for any of the investigations that have gone on. The investigating officers have. And in that, I would say there's also a large amount of hours that are taken up in report writing, preparing the documents for disclosure, getting them to the courts electronically through the process and then their attendance. I haven't had many circumstances where the officers have been there on multiple days. It's usually been a one-day, half-a-days time, you know, including travel time to get there and back and attending and testifying. But I know there have been at least two occasions this year where the officers have been there for the full day for the, so the majority of their shift, to have the attendance at court and testify or be determined they're not required and then be released.
So there's no real concern there at this time?
No.
And then, final question if I may, through you, is clean yards. Again, like I drive through town, I see this, I see that and I, look at that nice place, look at that not-so-nice place. And then I drive by that place a week later and it's looking not as nice as it was the week before. It just seems like these sorts of people, they, I think it's a sickness of sorts, you know? They go to flea markets or whatever, they get people dumping stoves and who knows what in front of their houses and problems typically get worse as time goes on. Are we taking or do we take a proactive approach to the clean yards or a reactive approach? Do we nip that in the bud or do we just kind of, I don't want to mess with that one, let's wait for somebody to complain?
Through you Chair. Thank you for the question. I would answer that by saying we do both. There's proactive and there's reactive, but the majority of it is going to be reactive. The officers, I would suggest that the officers can't be driving around and looking to initiate a lot of files where there's items on the property. If it's visual and people complain about it, the officers attend and do very quick response. They do the investigations and try to get it going, but even in that, there's a period of time where the officers attempt to work with the property owner to gain compliance. And as I gave the example of that large agricultural property, that was something that was in place and if people stack their things and line them up, technically they are adhering to a certain provision within the bylaws. So there has to be a reasonable list done, there has to be inspection done to determine what's there and what can't be there. Are there salvage items? Are there items that are going to decay when they're out in the elements or are the items that are being stacked and could be used for building supplies? Those things all have to come into play. And when the, I would suggest that when the officers are responding and doing parking enforcement and responding to other complaints, it's an extra demand if you're then looking at having officers do a lot more self-directed enforcement of bylaws specific to you, storage or what have you. But I can say the officers do become aware of things and if it is something that's corroborated with a complaint, they do follow up and do the investigation.
Just a follow-up to that.
Actually, if you could just pause for a moment. Director Bruder would like to add a comment as well.
Yeah, thank you Madam Chair. Just one of the things Counselor that you said, which I thought actually warranted some elaboration, was you were talking about these properties and, you know, you see them at one point and geez, they're maybe not so nice and you go look again and they're equally not as nice or worse. And then you mentioned something about, you know, it's almost like it's a sickness. Well, I can tell you in some cases, there can be more to these files than meets the eye too. As a matter of fact, you know, not getting into any specific cases, but I can think of a number where there can be varying forms of mental health issues at play as well. And when we're addressing these things, and it's more frequent than you might think, again, probably not something appropriate to delve too far into in this setting, but we like to try especially in those circumstances to ensure that, you know, if needed, we're engaging the right supports, we're providing ample time to work through some of these things. So, you know, I think for those that maybe don't have insight into that, it's understandable that they would think, well, you know, that's taking a long time to address. And in some cases, maybe it does take a little longer than we'd like, but in some cases there are the other factors at play like I'm describing here. And that can affect how we approach files as well. So it's just, when you said that, it kind of made me think of that and I just wanted to highlight it. Thank you.
And if you'd like to just wrap up this line of questioning, Counsel Mikulak?
Sure. I just, I feel, I feel as though, and I'm not saying how to, any officer should do their job, and I don't know what's involved with pulling over or seeing a house that has a lot of stuff that's accumulating and I think that there's mental issues, but I also think there's people that are starting to get into this idea of scrapping, like, you know, just collecting junk and scrapping. And they leave it on their lawn and, you know, sort out this and sort out that and they're using it as a scrapyard. If we don't jump on that sooner than later, and this is just my opinion, I'm not an expert, I feel as though it's just, it's just going to get harder to clean up if it just gets worse. So that's just my comment with respect to that. I'm wrapping up. It was more than 10 minutes.
Did you have something you wanted to respond there?
I would just, through you Chair, just say thank you for the comment and I would open it up to you. If you drive by properties and you see that, contact me. Contact our office and we'll start a complaint, for sure, start an investigation.
Mayor Easton, did you have a question?
Thank you very much Madam Chair. As I listen to the questions, and I want to thank Mr. Barkway very much for the report. It was very complete, but it also has its own story in terms of workload. And my question is related to, what are the standards for measuring workload in the area of bylaw enforcement? What are we doing? Because right now, we're collecting numbers and anecdotal evidence, which does add quite a bit of depth to your report. So will we be continuing on in this way through 2025? Or are you beginning to look at a different methodology for providing counsel with more information that is more reflective of the depth of the workload that is being carried out by the officers?
Through you Chair. Thank you very much. Yes, I am looking at gathering different information or providing different information in regards to what effect that has on each officer, what the officer's carrying, the types of investigations each of the officer carries throughout the year. I can say from my own perspective, I do have regular conversations with each of my officers to find out how they're managing their workload, what they're doing, what they're prioritizing and how they're prioritizing and what the outcomes are of the investigations. So that's something that I will be looking to provide more information for, for the next year's report for sure.
And Madam Chair, I want to compliment Mr. Barkway because there were a number, and I mean a number, of episodes where we have reports on the same issue. And the issues are not going away because there's a difference of opinion. Some of the differences are between the complainants and the neighbors. Some of them are just a complaint that doesn't fit with the bylaw that we have in place. However, our bylaw department has decided that their standard is going to be that they will always respond to the complaint. And if there's anything new that they can work on, they do that. If there's nothing new and there's just no resolution, they move on. I think that's the right approach. and there's just no resolution, they move on. I think that's the right approach. And regardless of the amount of time that it takes, it is a more satisfactory way for members of our community to feel that, to feel that they are, are being heard. Sometimes there is no resolution, but I believe that this is the right approach. And I wonder if Mr. Barkway would just speak briefly about how it is that he came to, to the decision that that's how this type of work should be addressed.
Through you, Chair. Thank you very much. I acknowledge that taking this route does bring with it some additional time, effort. And to speak clearly, speak plainly, it also adds some frustration. However, in the long run, we all feel that it is extremely important that people feel heard. And I hear the term a lot about vexatious and frivolous complaints. My concern with that, although we do have that, and we speak to that within our policy, the, the look and, and the attitude that we have in response to complaints is that we'll receive the complaint and look at it, and base the investigation on the merits of the complaint and the invest, and the information that's there. But it doesn't, it doesn't stop anybody from actually making complaint and, and expressing themselves. And if that takes two calls, five calls, 20 emails, or one email, or a couple of attendances in person, that's what we here with the town, with municipal law enforcement offers.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Mayor Easton. Tony Brunet, you're next. Sorry, Counsel Brunet.
Thank you, Chair. Through you to Mr. Barkway. Mike, you, you spoke under the forecast slide. You talked about the implementation of a new ticketing software and tool. And you spoke about many municipalities are already using this, and we're, we're going to implement it. So, you know, when the mayor was talking about managing workload, this is exactly where I wanted to go with this question, and maybe get you to elaborate on the benefits of, of going to this new implementation. Because quite often, if I'm here at Town Hall early in the morning, I'll see some officers in here. It seems like maybe, and again, I don't know, they work for you, you know, they're in here, maybe they're preparing for their day, maybe they're doing some, some paperwork from the day before, et cetera, et cetera. And then they're out into the field where they're actually, you know, they're actually seeing and, and, and responding to, like you say, emails that they've, they've received the next day. So, you know, I'm just wondering if you can actually speak to this implementation. A, number one, what is the cost? And what is the cost benefit of this implementation?
Through you, Chair. Thank you. We're talking about the ticketing software. It's a, it's a platform called G-Tecna. And that is a system that is in place in numerous municipalities within Niagara. I believe St. Catherine's is moving towards that, or has. Welland has had that system in place for seven years. And I believe municipalities like Toronto and other larger municipalities do, do operate on that system as well. The benefits to that system, actually, first, my apologies, I believe the approximate cost to get that program was put through a business case, and I believe it, it's, I don't have the exact number with me, but I believe it's about $74,000 to get the program and have it. So it's up and running, which includes training, the software, the apps, the, the equipment that's required, all from G-Tecna itself. And the, my apologies, I don't know all the technical terms or the IT terms for that. What will it do, and how's it going to help? I can say that speed that the officers are able to do the enforcement, this, this ticketing software has the ability to read license plates, and then bring that information into the digital ticket. So it's not something where there, there'll be less errors by the officers that are writing the tickets. No more handwritten tickets, they're going to be printed. So the information's all typed out onto the screen on a piece of paper that's, that is weather resistant. So that then reduces the amount of clear bags that we've been using to put the tickets in in the winter or during implement, inclement weather. The speed of the ticket will be issued, the ability that they, they have their printer with them right there at the time, the GPS-ing of the vehicles when they're taking it, and taking the pictures on the same app, so it's included in the ticket. So that's actually disclosure for the appellant in receiving the ticket. They're actually getting the information, and they're seeing what the, the evidence the officer has seen at the time. That, that speeds up anything in regards to screening or dispute, because I provide that information to them as well. Now they will already have that information. The, the additional ability with this is, we will have a second tier or platform within that. So the officers will then be able to, with the non-parking amps bylaw that we have, and I spoke to the schedules we're looking to bring in from other bylaws, will now be able to issue penalty notices from those from the same device with the same printer at the time. So I'll give an example of clean yards. If we, if we introduce the clean yards bylaw into the non-parking amps bylaw, we get a complaint about property where they have not cut their grass, and it appears to be in excess of 20 centimeters. The officer goes and confirms the information. They issue a notice the first time. That happens, they're given seven days to comply, cut their grass. We get a complaint a month later, or the officers drive by and see that, and the, the property is now back to the same state. It's not being maintained. The notice that's given is, with this new system, the notice that we're going to provide them on first offense, also advises them that this notice and the requirements to adhere to the by, the clean yards bylaw are in place for the remainder of that calendar year. So any other further complaints, the officers will be going and, going to directly to enforcement, issuing a ticket. They'll be able to do it right at the time, issue the ticket. And they can also then contract the, a company to come and do the works to get, to gain the compliance. So there'll be speed and efficiency in regards to other bylaws as well. And the opportunity to do penalty notices for different bylaws, whereas before, that was by notice and orders, which took a lot more time. These things will speed up those processes as well.
Great. Thank you for that detailed response through you, Chair. Just another question. So, Mike, I'm wondering, you know, when I look at, when we look at the fines issued at $24,310, payments received $17,275, and then we have $12,310 outstanding. So we have $29,000 in, in fines that we're, that we're chasing or paid, but, but 24 issued. So it's quite obvious that there's maybe some carryover from a year before. So I guess my question is, I know, you know, we're talking about, you know, this is going to come to a head when somebody goes to the ministry, gets a license, et cetera, et cetera, but there's carryover here. So how long do we carry this over? And how much money are we potentially writing off year to year that doesn't get collected?
Through you, Chair. Thank you for the question. I, I don't have information like that with me right now. It's a very good question, and, and I would like to take some time to be able to find that, and I can provide that to you in regards to dollar amounts. What I will say is, it's not written off. The, anything that goes to the MTO for the plate denial process stays with that vehicle in the system with the MTO. And then the MTO collects those funds when people come to renew their license, or renew their, their driver license, renew their vehicle. Those, that's what the plate denial is, that's, that's what that stands for. And then, in order to continue with that renewal, they have to pay out any outstanding fines. That money's remitted, and then the MTO then holds that money and notifies the municipality that there's, there's funds that have been remitted, and then that can be sent back to the municipality. My understanding was prior to, I think it was prior to 2022, there, it was a reciprocal agreement between Grimsby and Lincoln in regards to the plate denial. So I, I don't know prior to that, but since that time, we have severed that agreement. We have our own standing agreement with the MTO, and moving forward with that, carrying those funds forward, we'll be able to track those in a better process. And plus, getting away from the system that we have in place now, I believe it'll be, it'll afford us a greater opportunity to communicate with the MTO, and have the plate denial and the funds remitted in a better, better process that's more trackable than what there is right now.
Okay, thank you. And one, my final question, Chair. So, so, Mike, only because I was familiar with the file, so on the successes, you talked about this abandoned orchard and the compliance, you know, of that property. And I know it had many layers, and as you mentioned, OMAFRA, and you've got the, the adjoining property owners that were heavily involved, you know, trying to push this along. So because some of these things take so long, and because they are abandoned, and you've got issues that are developing with regards to soil and funguses and everything else, if, if adjoining farmers lose crop because of something that happens on a property that's been abandoned, is there a monetary assistance to those property owners that, that receive a loss of revenue?
Through you, Chair. Thank you. That's a great question. Nothing that I know that's in place, no process through the municipality. I'm not aware if there's anything through OMAFRA or through their own crop insurance that they would have. I would assume the first thing they would do is through their farm insurance and their crop insurance. I don't know if there's an avenue for the individual owners to then go after the property owner in some sort of civil litigation, but that would be, not be something that, that we would be directing or, or initiate. That would be something that the individual property owners would have to do at that point.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Counsel Brunet. Counselor Pachariva?
Thank you, Chair Murray. One quick one, Mike. Winter, snow, keep it clear. So I see that we've got interfere with snow clearing, 37 infractions issued in 2024. So roughly 6% of the total, but fifth highest of all of them. Do we have any direct connection with public works staff? Because, like, the issue is, so if our staff finishes at eight, people park on the street, they're there all night. If they don't get out until 8:39 in the morning, they're gone. But now, public works staff is going to come across that vehicle. Are they able to take a picture and send it to you? Or would residents be able to do that to your email? Because, like you say, you get the complaint, when you get there, it's gone. But this would be proof that it happened. And I think that's, that's a big point of consternation with a lot of residents who are not the SCOF laws, who, who abide by the rules because rules are for everyone. So I want to get your, I want to get your thoughts on that.
Through you, Chair. Thank you for that. Good point. First thing I can say is, yes, there is great communication that happens between Public Works and MLE. The, and also with the on-call supervisors. They do provide information both to myself and through our MLE inbox. They receive the information, again, also with, through Public Works, with the sidewalk, sidewalk clearing, the contractors for that. They have direct contact, both with myself and with the MLE inbox, to provide information. And I can say they do provide pictures. They do provide addresses where this is taking place, and that's followed up. I will say that we would not take that evidence that's based, that's provided by them, and use that towards enforcement, but we use it for information for us to guide us in the investigation that the officers would then conduct.
Okay, terrific. And as you can see, bylaw, hot topic, first hour. So I suggest you maybe start coming quarterly, Mike, with these things, or at least biennial, because as the seasons change, you know, different, different issues arise. And, and we store these all up, waiting to see you. So, good job. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Counselor. And, Mike, don't go anywhere. We appreciate you being here and answering the fulsome amount of questions that we've seen tonight. But now, we're really pleased to welcome, to hear a presentation from the representatives of the Niagara SPCA and Humane Society. And joining us is Tammy Gabory, Animal Care Manager, Nina Turmel, Animal Services Manager, presenting this evening, and also Amelia Canto, CEO, CEO, who has also joined us. Mike, can you introduce them for us, please?
Through you, Chair. Thank you very much. Actually, you stole my thunder there, and you did the introduction. But I'll call the three of them up, and they, I believe they have a really good presentation, informative information for you to digest.
Good evening. Thank you. I am Tammy Gabory. I am the Animal Care Manager at the Niagara SPCA. Thank you for having us. Through you, Chair. Thank you for having us here tonight. So I'm going to start a little bit of the organizational overview of our organization. So we, the Niagara SPCA was created in 2018. It was a merge between the Welland Humane Society, which was established in 1954, and the Niagara Falls Humane Society, which was established in 1947. We became one entity in 2018. By doing so, it's allowed us to operate three centers within the Niagara region. So we have shelters in Niagara Falls, Welland, and Port Coburn. We offer a low-cost bayneuter clinic within the city of Welland that is open to all Niagara residents and beyond. We have people coming from Lindsay, Ontario, to use our clinic services. So it's been a great addition to the Niagara region. We have an off-site cat adoption center at the Seaway Mall that we established in 2012. Since the inception of that cat adoption center, we've had over 9,100 cats adopted from that cat adoption center. That allows us to keep the flow moving through our shelter organizations, and we get them out into the communities. We service the municipalities of the city of Port Coburn, the Township of Waynefleet, Township of West Lincoln, Town of Lincoln, the Corporation of Haldeman County, the City of Welland, the City of Niagara Falls, and the Town of Hallam. So all of those communities come to our shelter locations for animal service needs. 2024 was a year of change for us at the Niagara SPCA. As some of you may know, we unexpectedly lost our Executive Director, John Greer, at the beginning of last year, which, for Nina and I, who've been within the organization, organization for many years, was a huge blow to us. But 2025 is starting off with change, and Amelia Canto has just come on as our CEO. This is day number five for her, so we're throwing her into the fire very quickly. So we're pleased to have Amelia join our team and bring us to the next, next stage. Amelia, did you want to say a few words?
Sure.
Yeah.
I'm just really pleased to have the chance to come here today, and pleased that, to be part of this presentation, and bring information to you, and answer questions that you may have.
Thank you. So in 2014, we opened our high-volume, low-cost bayneuter clinic. Like I said, services are available to anyone within the region. In 2017, we expanded that clinic to be a full companion animal hospital. So we are in the stages of creating that space where we can offer wellness appointments, vet checks, vaccination, updating, flea and tick and heartworm. So that is something that we are working on. To date, we've performed over 40,000 surgeries. So you can imagine the amount of unwanted litters that we have been able to stop from happening within our communities. And I'll turn it over to Nina.
So my name's Nina. As Mike had mentioned before, I'm the Animal Services Manager for that department. So these are some stats that I've collected so far. So these numbers here did only go until November of last year. December wasn't quite prepared at that time. So for, out here in the Town of Lincoln, we, so this would be animal service officers coming out here to the municipality and picking up these animals from the residents that reside here. So we had picked up 24 dogs. We do pick up stray confined cats out in this area. So 45 of those we picked up as well. Wildlife, we do respond to all sick and injured wildlife that passes through the area. So officers attended and picked up 92 animals. We responded to 94 bylaw infractions. Provision of needs is typically what we would call an owner of an animal not providing proper care, be it outside for too long, or maybe unsanitary conditions. So luckily, we have only had one of those concerns down in this area for that time in 2024. And then 62 other calls. So that typically would speak to deceased animals that people would come across, mostly on public property, roadways and things like that. We would send an animal service officer out to pick that up as well. So we have accommodations at our animal shelters, where they're properly picked up by authorized contractors to dispose of them properly. And then, so these are some of the things that residents from Town of Lincoln, they can come into our animal shelter. So, did I skip ahead? Yeah. Okay. So we had 24 dogs brought into us from some folks out here in Lincoln as well. We received a in Lincoln as well. We received 17 complaints regarding dog feces. So folks not cleaning up after their dogs or maintaining their yards from dog feces. Barking complaints, we received 32 of those complaints. We have received seven dog bites. Two of those did result in a muzzle order, which means that those dogs do have to wear a muzzle every time they're off of their own property. So when they're out in public and any public spaces. We've conducted 299 patrols. So we'll do our best to get out to local parks. Maybe there is different trails or walkways where people have been identifying that there are dog owners that are allowing their dogs to roam off leash. And then for our other, sorry, let me just flip that real quick. The other part in this section here would speak to loose cats. So if you're allowing your cat to roam off property, we would attend to that. Some livestock complaints, as well as we conduct kennel inspections for any licensed kennels out here in the Town of Lincoln. So some of the work as well that we've done out here for the Town of Lincoln, we've traveled quite a bit of kilometers visiting you guys out this way. So about 18,750 kilometers. We already talked about the 299 patrols. So we've had 52 animals dropped off at our shelter. 15 of those animals did find their way home. And are, just something to mention is our shelters are always open. We do not turn anybody away from the Town of Lincoln who has a stray animal. So having three shelters, because allows us to always make sure we're servicing the folks from the Town of Lincoln, should they have an animal come on their property and they need it to be picked up, or they need it to be dropped off. So we are what we call an open admissions shelter. You're never turned away, or you're never put onto a wait list.
So in 2024, we have a ongoing relationship with Violet Estates. So they, every month, showcase adoptable pets for us, which increases our reach. They also have offered any adoptable dogs passes to go to the vineyard to do walking of the vineyards. We also joined a Malivware Winery for a Dog Days of Summer event this past summer. Bylaw education, which is more of Nina's department, but that is, they go with the educational approach. We first tried to establish compliance, much like Mike was saying, you know, we are, we want to work within our community. And if we can work through those issues with, with the resident, then that's our ultimate goal. We work with several local rescues within the Town of Lincoln here. We have a senior visiting program. So we are looking to establish that within the Town of Lincoln. We've expanded out to, we've had some residents in Grimsby. So this is our next hotspot to be able to come to bring animals to those residents so that they can have a visit with a shelter animal. We held a rabies clinic at the Palmax here in town. And then we're looking to expand to do some more adoption events within the
So some of the things that we're looking to start doing for 2025 is an implant, like we're implanting, I can't say that word, I'm sorry, folks, a new wellness clinic. So we do have a partnership with Pet Value, which is, Palmax is part of that Pet Value family. So we have a couple mobile units that we like to get out into the different communities where we can offer rabies and microchips clinics. Maybe it's a wellness clinic where we'll have a registered vet tech or an RVT, along with an animal care staff member, where they can, excuse me, answer some very basic questions. You know, maybe look at some ears, some eyes, maybe some skin issues, maybe help trim nails if you had a senior owner who couldn't get out and do it themselves. So different things like that, we like to be able to offer people. All of our rabies and microchips clinics, we provide those services for a very basic cost. We're looking at just covering expenses of a vaccine or a microchip. So we're not charging full clinic prices. You don't have to pay any of that when we do these types of clinics. We hope to continue to join or work with Mike in regards to planning some different events this year, maybe come out and do some education surrounding coyotes with Coyote Watch Canada, and then just try to be proactive in those types of things. Like we talked about before, we do have our new CEO, Amelia, here with us. So I'm sure she has some very big plans for us. We are looking at continuing our plans for a new building or a new pet center as well. And then we just want to continue to be out in the community. We spend a lot of time working with our community members, see where we can help them, educate them, provide them food if they need it, just be helpful. We drop food off to people at times if they need it. So again, we just want to continue to work with everybody and know that there, and have them know that there's a place that they can call or come to if they have sort of like animal questions or concerns, or like I said, if they just need some basic help with things. This is some artwork, possibly for what our new animal space might look like. Did you have anything you want to add on that one?
So this will be a really major concern for us in the coming years. Is really looking to finalize the plans for this new building. And also, there will be some fundraising required to make sure that we're able to realize this. And we're looking at, you know, a three- to five-year window for it. We'll know more as we develop our plans over the course of the year, but that's where I'm really going to be focused in particular in working with our team.
So that's everything. Thanks, guys.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Do members of committee have any questions for the Niagara SPCA and Humane Society? I see that Mayor Easton has her hand raised. Mayor Easton, please go ahead.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I noticed that this report is very weighted toward domestic animals. And, and so I wanted to ask you a question about, I'm glad that you mentioned the Coyote Watch. Can you explain a little bit about that? That would be my first question.
For sure. Through yourself, Madam Chair, thanks for the question. So in regards to coyote, there is an organization, or excuse me, coyotes, there is an organization that we work with. They are called Coyote Watch. So we have a working relationship with them. If some folks in the communities that we service, if they identify that there's a hotspot for coyote traffic, what we'll do is we will try to get out there and identify if there's anything that might be attracting those coyotes, be it, maybe there's some debris or garbage that's left out. Maybe there's a food source from bird feed, for an example, that might be attracting them. So we'll try to work with that person to try to clean up that space to prevent the coyotes from coming through. So a lot of it is just education and what we can do to prevent the coyotes from coming into our backyards.
Okay. That's, that's helpful. Could you just update us on how the exotic animal bylaw fits into the overall plan? I didn't see any mention of that at all. And yet, I understand that you do have a very active program.
Thank you for that question. So through yourself again, Madam Chair, we haven't had any concerns in 2024 regarding, excuse me, exotic animals coming through. But there is a municipal bylaw. So of course, any information that would hit our, hit our desks, we would reach out to, we have a few partners that we work with in regards to whether or not to confirm they can actually own them or not. And if so, what we can do for them to gain compliance, or like what we might have to do to get them to rehome them.
And, and how would that fit into some of the work that's going to be done on drugs and, and guns and other illegal materials that are being brought over, over the border? Do you see any connection to that at all?
Thank you again for that question. So through yourself, Madam Chair, I do not see any connection in that regard. I think the Border Services, they do a great job in the CFIA. They do that, that job right there at the border to ensure those types of animals are not brought in. I mean, that's not to say, of course, that some have come in, but we will only respond if somebody has some evidence to support the animal's actually there. So I don't see any connection at all in that regards. So luckily, it, yeah, it really hasn't been an issue at this point.
Okay. So I take it from what you're saying that we don't have a problem with exotic animals in our communities.
Thanks again. So through yourself, Madam Chair, I'm not sure right now that I can necessarily say that we, I mean, I don't see an issue with it, but that's definitely some details that I would have to dig further into, to be able to really confirm and say that. I don't see an issue at this point. So nothing has been brought to the forefront. But I definitely can, you know, check in to try to find some further details to, to establish whether it is or it isn't.
Okay. Thank you very much. I would, I think that having a further discussion about the condition of the bylaw would be a good idea. Since you are going through some organizational change, it would be beneficial to get to know you all a little bit better. Thank you very much, and thanks for your report. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Mayor Easton. Counselor Ranjima, you're next in the queue.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, everybody, for your presentation. My question is about if there is a complaint about a dog bite, and an order is issued, is the follow-up, what does the follow-up look like? And is it all, is it primarily or all complaint-based? In other words, is it up to the complainant, or the person whose dog was bitten, to follow up and say, okay, I've been walking in that same neighborhood, and I've seen that dog, and the dog doesn't have a muzzle, and I know there's a muzzle order? So what happens following, for example, a muzzle order? Is there any follow-up? And I apologize, this has probably been mentioned before in other meetings, but I forget, and I'm thinking about a specific incident, incidents, where a person in my neighborhood has asked me what they can expect once that order has been issued. Is it up to them to call and say, I mean, it's got to be to a certain extent. You know, you can't go around checking on things weekly for the rest of your life, or monthly for the rest of your life. But is it to a certain extent up to the complainant? And if so, is it, is that, is that communicated with them at the time that the order, or that the complaint is sent in to you?
Through yourself, Madam Chair, thanks for the question. So there is follow-up, absolutely, that my team will, will do. So we initially will go and check to see whether or not they've met all the requirements of that muzzle order. You know, to simple, you know, did they post the proper signs? Is the gate locked? Is the muzzle correct for the dog? So we'll follow up with those types of items. In regards to further sort of support on that, it is typically complaint-driven. So once all the criteria has been met, and that person or that dog owner has followed everything that's been asked of them, at that point, it would be complaint-driven. So somebody would reach out to us with supporting evidence to say that that person has not properly followed that muzzle order. And with a supporting evidence, of course, we would then investigate the concern and see whether or not everything matches up.
Okay. So that, does the complainant receive anything saying, okay, this order has been issued, they have to wear a muzzle, they have to sign their law, they have to keep their gate locked? You know, in the future, are they aware, I guess, that it's up to them to sort of, I don't think people know. They, I, I think, I don't think people really know what's expected of them, following a situation like that. So are they made aware that it's, I don't know how to say this without making it sound flip, and I don't mean it to be flip, but that it's on them to sort of follow up, and if they're walking through that neighborhood, let you know that that dog's sitting on the porch with no muzzle?
Thank you for the question. So through yourself, Madam Chair. So it's, so yes, they are advised of that. So essentially, the conversation would go, moving forward, should you see this animal, you know, on the public sidewalk with, without a muzzle on, please reach out to our office and we will respond accordingly. We do make people aware of that. We do let our complainants know that this, the, you know, the, here's the list of the criteria that we have asked these folks to follow. Should you see them out and about not doing those types of things, in order for us to respond to it, you do, you know, we do ask that you give us a call.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Counselor Ranjima, can I just, can I just interrupt for a moment? Mr. Barkley would like to add a few comments.
Sure. Thank you.
Through your chair, thank you. I just want to add that any follow-up complaints that, that the town would receive would be disseminated to bylaw, municipal law enforcement, and we would consult with Niagara SPCA and Humane Society and ensure that there is some follow-up that takes place. That's the collaborative approach that we take with that. But it is something, it is an instance where it would have to be something that is seen, and it's, as the SPCA has described, it's not something where they can, or, and you've stated, it's not something where an officer can be there every day watching for it. So it is something, unfortunately, there is a reliability on the people that are in the area or that are aware of it to notify us if they see something happens that contravents the muzzle order, and then it's followed up, for sure.
Okay, that all makes a lot of sense. Thank you. And Madam Chair, I have another question. I know that, or I've heard that, and it makes sense that, and I've seen people talking about that. During COVID, there was a surge of people adopting animals. And that later, some no longer wanted to maybe keep the animal, or found that they didn't have time to take care of the animal, or maybe weren't as responsible as they should be with that animal. And, and may have set the animal free, or bringing it into you, or bringing an animal in to be put down. Are you still seeing that? Are you still seeing a rise in that kind of, sort of, people not wanting their animals anymore?
Through you, Madam Chair, thank you for that question. Being in the shelter, what I have seen and what we hear, probably the most common reason for relinquishment is loss of residence, financial constraints that are, they're not able to financially care for their animal anymore, vet costs, medical issues that have come up that they can't afford. In all honesty, for us, COVID returns were not really high for our shelters. We did see intake of a lot more litters of puppies. People decided that during COVID, everybody wanted a puppy, so let's create a business and start breeding our dogs and selling them. And now their demand is not there. So probably, last year is probably the most local puppies I've seen come through our shelter doors in the 30 years that I've been within the organization. It used to be that we were able to do these large rescues in northern Manitoba. Those are things we can't do right now because we are seeing so many in, in our own populations coming into our care. But those are predominantly the most common reasons for relinquishment that we're seeing.
Okay. And then one more related question, Madam Chair, and then I'll move on. Is there any help for somebody that, that has a, you know, speaking of financial burdens, is there any help for anyone who has an animal that needs to be put down and perhaps can't afford it? Because it's, it's, I don't think it's cheap.
Thank you for that question. Through you, Madam Chair. So we will work with a family. Ultimately, we don't want an animal suffering. We don't want a family to go through that. So if we can reduce price and work with those families, we will do that. We have an H4C program in our shelters where if we have space available, we offer 30 days of no-charge boarding. If someone is experiencing a loss of a residence, a fire in a residence, an emergency where they're in hospital, nobody to care for their pet, they can come into our shelters and we'll provide that care for 30 days. If they need an extension, we'll work with the family on that as well. Like I said, our main goal is that no animal is suffering. So if there is a reason that somebody can't afford a vet surgery, can't afford a medical, we ask that they always reach out to us so that we can work with them, so we can provide that, that care to the, to the family and to that animal.
Good to know. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Mickelik.
Thank you very much, Chair. Through you to the presenters. Thank you for staying here this late evening and showing up in person on this cold night. You mentioned 318 calls. You mentioned the work you've done on slides five, six, and seven. What, is this a busy year? What, what makes for a busy year? What, what, surely there must be anticipated or expected numbers. Where does this data Where does this data fall in terms of, is it a light year, regular year, or a busy year?
Thanks for the question. So through yourself, Madam Chair. I don't know necessarily if I would make a comment to say it was a light year. I think one of the biggest things that we're starting to see as our populations start to grow, and every, in each of the municipalities that we service, our call volume goes up. So I would say it's mostly sort of average for us.
Typical.
Yeah, typical, right? I mean, yeah, so, yeah, thank you.
Simple. That's all right. And then through you, one more question I have is, talked about stray dogs, stray cats, what, you know, I'm walking around, I'm a resident, I see a stray dog. This dog is kind of looking lost and looking like it might be a danger, you know, to anybody on the streets, or rather than go on Facebook and, you know, put a, put an ad out, you know, lost dog. What, what can, what can a resident expect calling the, you know, the SPCA or NPA, you know, the, what is it, Niagara SPCA? What can a resident expect making that phone call in terms of how long response time, what would happen?
So through yourself, Madam Chair, thank you for the question. So typical expectation would be, they reach out to our dispatcher. We have somebody answering phones 24 hours, 365. So it's just as simple as that person would place a call to us, and we would collect some details. Where are you? Give me a description on the dog. Do you see any visible, maybe collar or a tag? First thing we would do is we reach out to our resources. So we would check to see if there's any lost reports. Maybe it is somebody local in the town of Lincoln lost their dog, so we want to be able to reunite that person with their dog as opposed to impounding it and then bringing it into our care, and then have them come to us. Second thing is, if we're not finding any visible IDs, and if we don't have any lost reports on file, officer would attend. So we're not all that far. We have the QEW that connects us from our Niagara Falls shelter. We do, we work out in Palom in West Lincoln, so we're always, if not in Lincoln, we're very close by. So we typically would have an officer out there. They would impound that dog, or take it into their possession, search for a microchip, and then if we have a microchip, that's a permanent form of identification, so the same thing would apply. We would try to reach out to that owner before the dog comes into our care. In an ideal situation, we would find the owner before we have to bring it to one of our shelters. And then if we didn't have any luck, the dog would then be impounded and then be put into the system. And then we wouldn't wait for an owner to come pick up.
Okay, so just, just follow-up, just, so the dog catcher would come in about 45 minutes or so?
That's a little bit long, but possibly. I mean, it could range, again, it sort of really, it ultimately depends on the situation as well, too, right? So if we see a friendly dog just sort of hanging around, you know, it may not be a top priority. If it's an aggressive animal that's barking, growling, we're stopping everything that we're doing, regardless of where we are, and we're coming here straight away. So if it's one of those types of situations, we can, you know, we can absolutely be around as quick as possible. And if it's just, you know, I saw a dog 20 minutes ago, we will circle around and try to find that, find that dog. So we do our best to not make people wait because you never know what that animal might do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilor Mikulak. Councilor Timmers?
Thank you very much, Chair. Through you to the presenters. Thanks for being here this evening. So a few years ago, we had a specialized van that came, and we, we all had a tour, and we were really excited. And then I think COVID happened, and I, I don't know what's happened from, from that moment forward. So you did talk a little bit about it, and it's in your report. So what, what do you look, what does that look like? Like, how often do you think that that mobile clinic could visit town of Lincoln, and perhaps in different parts of Lincoln? You know, we've got Camden, Beamsville, Vineland, we've got a lot of different areas, because I had spoken originally about having it come to Camden. So what are your thoughts on that? What does it look like when you roll that service out?
Thank you for the question. So through yourself, Madam Chair. So the unit that came through before COVID, I was in attendance as well, so that was our, essentially our rabies and our microchip unit. So that has, it did pause for the two years doing, during COVID, but we have picked that back up. Like Tammy had mentioned before, we have already been out in Beamsville to the Palmacs, and we held a rabies and a microchip clinic. So we can, the unit, of course, can go almost anywhere, but ideally, what you need, excuse me, what we need, would be a space to support us. So enough space for the unit. We would need access to running water. We would also need access to a washroom, and then, of course, enough parking. So we're open to visiting anywhere in the town of Lincoln, but we do have to have a few of those things before we can commit to that location. And we hope to do that at least twice in 2025. We would get a veterinarian to be on board, and then we would just reach out to whoever may be interested in the town of Lincoln who can support our needs.
Okay, no, that sounds great. I, I could see, I, I have a location for you. We just need to, we'd really need to get people aware so that they're ready and they come out. So it's worth your while, you know, you're not coming in, and one person shows up. But, no, I think that's a great service. I could see it working really well. Also, one thing that my, my radar went off when I heard you say, visiting senior homes. And, you know, we have Albright Center, and we also have United Midnight Home. And when, when animals come on, come into the sites there, it just, the happiness it brings, the residents who live there is just incredible. So I would love to see that happen, and I'd be more than happy to help connect you with the program person at Albright Center to get you in there with some animals, when, when it's a good time and when people are well. Right now, there's a lot of sickness going on, so. But anyway, those are my comments. Thank you, Chair. Thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you very much, Councilor Timmers. Councilor Briney?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation. My first question is, when the tender goes out for animal control services, the, the term of that contract, what is it typically? Does it, is it a, is it a long-term contract? Is it a three-year contract, a five-year contract? Maybe just, if you could just speak to that.
Thanks for the question. So through yourself, Madam Chair, and I could potentially have Mike confirm with me as well, too. Is it three years?
Three years with two options.
Correct. So currently, it is three years with two, two-year, one, two one-year extensions.
So, so we have a mutual, we have a mutual investment. And when I look at the statistics, it was quite, it was quite shocking for me, actually, to see the number of patrols that you're making, the number of kilometers that you're coming to Lincoln, and you, you spoke about, you know, these different events that you're doing. And, you know, this is music to my ears. I've got someone that closely involved in, within my family, that is involved in dog rescue, so they're continually involved with people, you know, giving food to people that, owners that can't provide food, rabies clinics, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But with that comes, and it's not the word notoriety, but it's, it's, it's community partnership, and it's identifying that your organization is actually part of our community. So when I look at that picture on the van, the white and blue van that clearly says SPCA on it, is that a van that, if I'm up at Kinsman Park, if I'm at Lyons Park, and I'm walking my dog, that I'm going to see? Because I got to be honest with you, I'm not seeing the van. So are your officers, are your, are your personnel in unmarked vehicles, or just, just help me with that?
For sure. Yeah, so thanks for your question. So through yourself, Madam Chair, that, it could be one of the vehicles. We have many different vehicles that we could be using. We did have a short amount of time where we did have an unmarked vehicle. It, you know, we sort of ran the approach of, we were actively trying to catch people in the act of allowing their dogs to run loose, or defecating and not cleaning it up. So we were just sort of using different tactics in order to have that communication and education with people. So sometimes, or the majority of the time, it would be a marked vehicle. Sometimes, though, we do have an unmarked vehicle that we do use. Now, everybody's in a marked uniform, of course, but yeah, so we have done that as well. And we do our best to come very random times. We don't want to have any sort of pattern or method to our approach, because then people just, the same people are always seeing us. We're not catching those who may be at this time, or that time, or maybe Sunday morning, for an example. So it is very random. It's, you know, as you're coming through, and you're passing through for different things, whatever parks you're coming across, you're stopping at. So again, we don't want anybody to know, oh, they're always there, you know, three days a week at 10:00 a.m., because that kind of defeats the point.
Yeah, no, I, I get it. And I'm only asking this question because, you know, I think there's, there's multiple ways you can look at animal services and enforcement. And yeah, there's always that bad side of it, you know, that you're, you're the bad people coming out to enforce something and looking for people that aren't doing what they should be doing. But there's a whole different world of what you can provide in terms of, you know, education and providing a service that, that, that is really needed in a community, and you becoming a community partner. And that's where I'd like to see this go. And I don't think it's, it's healthy for a municipality to be having to change this type of thing, you know, so that, okay, we've got you for three years, and then we throw you out, like, with the bathwater, and we go to somebody else. If, if you're doing a good job and you're a community partner, you know, we should look to continue that. So that's kind of what I'm trying to highlight here, is it looks like you're doing wonderful things in our community, but it's about education, and, and hopefully, you're going to, you're going to, you're going to do that by doing more of that community involvement stuff on weekends where people are going to see you. You know, we, we actually have a new, we have a new veterinary clinic here, and, and another new, you know, pet facility on Ontario Street. So our, our population is growing, and with that is more pets. And so I think this couldn't come at a better time. I'm sure I'm not telling you anything you already know, because I'm seeing a lot of body, a language that is very positive. But I think that's really important, that we work together collaboratively to make sure that we raise the bar and raise the awareness. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Councilor. Councilor Pachariva?
Thank you, Chair Murray. And through you, ladies, thanks for coming. And kind of on Councilor Briney's question there, like, yeah, almost 20,000 kilometers traveled. And I thought John had touched on this last year when he was here. Any thoughts of a satellite location out in, in, in the West End, knowing that you, Haldeman, West Lincoln, Lincoln, this is kind of far from Welland, right? So, and I thought that, maybe my memory's, you know, waning, but was there thought of something out this way?
Thanks so much for the question. So through yourself, Madam Chair. To be honest, it's a, it's a possibility. I've had a lot of conversation with John. I was in the, in the know for a lot of different things. Ultimately, we really just strive to do the best for the communities that we service. So of course, we're always open to those types of ideas. Having a satellite office absolutely brings a lot more with it. So space, staffing, resources, insurance, all those different types of things as well, too, right? You know, it's something that, like our animal shelters, we have people there coming and going, could be at any time, because like I said, animal services works after hours. So it would be something that we can make sure that we have the resources to support. It's not just the space, there's a lot more things that go with it. But it's definitely something that we would never say no to.
Terrific.
Should we have the support that we need to do those types of things.
With the brand-new CAO looking to make her mark, right?
Through you, Madam Chair, if I could respond a little bit more. It's great for me to be here and to hear these comments, because very much, we're interested, and we actually had dinner before we came here, and we were talking about the very same things that you're raising just now, you and Councilor Briney, because we really see an opportunity for us to elevate the profile and share more information. You know, we've been pretty low-key about it, to be perfectly frank. And as a newcomer to the organization, I really see that, an opportunity to elevate our profile, be more visible, but not just for ourselves. It's actually so that we can serve the community and address the needs, and make sure that we're providing that education. So I think now is a really good time for me to hear these comments and be part of this, as we start to plan and think ahead, you know, with, again, a fresh approach, fresh eyes, and really have an opportunity as someone new here to start developing some of these relationships further, see where they can go. And ultimately, you know, of course, one of the challenges we have is funding. So that's going to be a really key focus for us. That's a big part of my background that I bring to the organization, is really making sure that we have the resources that we need, and that we'll take funding to support it.
Okay, terrific. That's great to hear. And through you, Madam Chair, and you gave me a perfect segue about promotion and, and getting the message out there. I'm an avid watcher of CH, so flip it on at 6:00 in the morning, right, trying to figure out, as I leave, what route do I take if there's an accident, and I try to avoid this guy way at all cost. But 7:55 Monday mornings, they have their animal adoption people on there. And even if you have a crappy day, it's early, but you, you see that, and it just, it gives you goosebumps. And it's like, you know, do you, do you, gals, like, does your organization get a chance to be on there to promote yourself with?
Thank you for that question. Through you, Madam Chair. I have attempted to get us onto CHCH. What I've been told right now is all their slots are filled with the organizations that they currently work with. So I still keep plugging away at that, because I think it's a great way to promote what we have in our shelter. So yeah, it is something, it is something I'd love to get on to.
Okay, yeah, because they're, you know, they're constantly talking about their advertising reach, and how it's 97% of all Niagara. Maybe our CAO can help us a little bit there. Being a former comms person in Hamilton, I, I think he might be able to open a door or two, right? So we'll lean on him for that. And, and last question, and again, it's, you know, bylaw, it's all, it's all kind of woven together, and it's how does a resident, you know, the, the, not picking up the dog feces, which drives my wife crazy, because, you know, we got our little bag and make sure we've got it all the time. And the same thing with the off-leash. Like, so we've got an off-leash park, but, you know, people, again, oh, rules aren't for me, I'll just do it whenever. And, and so, is the best way to be ordered to, to get some compliance, is it to make a diary of when these things happen and then reach out to you guys? Because, like, if it's, a dog's off-leash, by the time you get here, you know, they're, they're gone. So what's the best approach to try to nail some of these chronic offenders? Because it's about changing behavior, and unless they're caught, the behavior's not going to change.
Yeah, thanks so much for the, the question there. So through yourself, Madam Chair. I would say absolutely. I mean, of course, we don't put the sole onus on the person who's witnessing the violation. But yes, we absolutely do our best to sort of track patterns of people, areas. If somebody says to me, you know, I see somebody every day, you know, 9:30 in the morning, this is the direction, et cetera, this is what they're doing, I will do my best to put somebody out there if they develop a pattern. You know, if it's once every month, there's a very good chance I'm not going to cross paths. But again, ultimately, we try. It's all about due diligence, and just, again, hearing people and letting them know we're absolutely trying to do what we can with them. Because, like you said, it is a pattern of behavior. We do our best to, again, catch people in the act of. So if you do not know, as an example, where that dog owner lives, I need to have somebody out there, again, to catch them in the act of doing it. Often, it's hard to gain compliance. People are not the easiest to work with. So again, as long as we can provide that education piece and let them know sort of the ramifications, disease control, messiness, et cetera, you know, at least we're doing something.
Yeah, no, that's terrific, because this is, it's the same issue that we get to with, you know, speeding and bad driving. And we work with our Public Works Director, and the first thing that the NRP says is, well, we can't be there the whole during the day. When are the chronic times? And then kind of narrows it down, and then they're able to catch. So thank you for that. Thanks for coming. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. There being no further questions, I'd like to thank our guests for joining us today. We appreciate that. Also, Mr. Barkley, thank you for your presentation. And I have a motion moved by Councilor Rangema. That committee received for information, Report PD-02-25 regarding the Municipal Law Enforcement 2024 Year-End Review and Associated Presentations. I will now ask our deputy clerk to please open the vote. I will now ask our deputy clerk to please open the vote.
Thank you, Chair. That now, that vote is now open. Madam Mayor?
Support.
Thank you. And Counselor Rajima?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor Timmers? Counselor Timmers?
Sorry about that. I'm trying to find it. Okay, I'm, there it is. It's on my screen.
No problem.
There we go.
If you'd like, I can mark off your vote if you'd like.
I did vote.
Oh. Could you please tell me verbally? It didn't connect to my screen.
Sorry, I did vote, but I'm in favor.
Thank you, Counselor. And with that, I'll close the vote, and that carries. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Thank you for joining us. We have two more reports to listen to today. As we've been here for almost two hours, I'm going to call a 10-minute break, and then we will reconvene in 10 minutes. Thank you. Thank you very much. We will now resume. We are now considering Item 7.2.2, Building Permit Activity Report for 2024 and the 2023-24 Building Activity Comparison, P D 03 dash 25. Was Director Bruder planning on introducing the? All right, so please. Begin.
Thank you, Chair. I don't have a whole lot of comments for this report. I do want to add some info for forecasting on 2025. The reason being is this report was drafted the first week of January, and since that time, we've had some applications come in and some meetings with some property owners and developers to discuss applying for permits. So since the report was drafted, we've had Sunrise Greenhouse in Vineland, they've applied for a 54,000-square-foot greenhouse addition that's valued at around $6.5 million. We've had Pioneer Greenhouse from St. Catherine's. I had a meeting with them yesterday. They came in. They're proposing a 48,000-square-foot building on Fourth Avenue. For perspective of that building that Pioneer's looking at, that'd be really similar to the building that Kearney built a couple of years ago on Durham Road and the highway. It'd be a cold storage building. And two weeks ago, we met with Silvergate Homes, who own low-density land in Prudhams. And they want to apply for some permits in February. And they're anticipating starting some townhomes in the end of May, beginning of June. Their first phase would be 30 units is what they want to start. So when you add these new developments to the report, we have Hampton Inn on the report. We have El Borgo and the Green Lane Catholic School. We are just shy of $50 million in commercial activity that's going to be issued this year. So trying to forecast 2025 against 2024, I think residential units won't be as high in 2025 compared to 2024. But I believe our commercial, industrial, institutional, and agricultural volume will be high, seeing as we're already at almost 50 million in the chute ready to go. So that was my comments for forecasting. My comments for 2024 is I'm comfortable with the numbers. The numbers are good. I'd like to be a little bit busier. But the last two years, Counselor Brunet has asked me how my sleep patterns are going or if this is keeping me up at night. But I'm happy with how 2024 turned out. So that's all my comments.
Thank you very much. Do members of committee have any questions to this report? Counselor Pachariva, please start us off.
Yeah, thanks, Chair Murray. Andrew, great report, great news. You had, and I highlighted it, there was something in here about the job sharing with the Town of Grimsby?
Correct, through you, Chair. At this time, because I don't really want to proceed with backfilling our vacant position until permits are actually issued over the counter. We do have a lot of permits in the work, and I'm hearing a lot of stuff on job sites saying how it's starting to slowly turn around and things are getting better. But until we actually issue permits over, we've been in discussions with the Town of Grimsby for a joint enforcement program. So it would be, joint enforcement is permitted under the Building Code Act. So it would remain as Town of Lincoln, as our department. Town of Grimsby would remain as their department. But staff would get appointed under a bylaw on the other municipality's council, and we would be able to cover for each other if, for vacation purposes or if we get busy and we haven't backfilled our position yet. It gives us some time to be able to fill that position and we don't have to jump into it. So that's how it started and came about.
Okay, terrific. And through you, Madam Chair. Great to see that El Borgo was starting on their units. Do we have a timeline yet or any word about Pearl Morissette? Like, that was the first application that came in, and yet there's nothing, so.
Through you, Chair. I, for El Borgo, they've submitted for their 10 short-term accommodations. It's almost like a hotel. They're, I believe, 18 feet wide by 30 feet long. They're about 630 square feet. They're classified as a hotel, so they're commercial, not residential. They do have their applications in. I believe they're wrapping up their site plan. So I'm anticipating those getting issued by the end of winter, starting construction. I don't have any info on Pearl Morissette's short-term accommodations. I haven't received any applications or don't have any more info on those.
Okay. Mr. Bruder?
Through you, Madam Chair. I haven't heard anything either. Last I heard, you know, there was some things they were doing just in terms of their initiatives with the restaurant that was taking priority on Pearl Morissette. But in terms of their accommodations, I haven't heard of any movement thus far.
Okay, and when they get approval, is there not a two-year timeline on that approval? Before it lapses and then they would have to come back?
Through you, Madam Chair. That's correct for a site plan. In this case, they would probably have to come in and do kind of a site plan amendment. They didn't do that. They only got their land use permission through council, and that doesn't have a time limit associated with it.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Micklin, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. Through you to either Andrew or Matt. And again, there's another report with planning coming up as well. But I figure I'll ask it now while Andrew's still here. We talk about projections with construction activity. We talk about forecasting in previous budgets, right? Like, and that equals revenues. Should I be feeling really excited about like this report? Like, how does this align with what we forecasted with respect to our budgets and anticipated construction activity and how that equates to D C's or, you know, planning department revenues?
Through you, Madam Chair. Maybe I'll start in if Andrew has anything he can add in. I think definitely, you'll see when I do my presentation later, from a revenue side of things, when we talk about planning and building, we're in better shape overall than I think we thought we would be when we looked at this before 2024 started, when you look at that year-end review. Still, there is some market headwinds that the industry is dealing with, for sure. So, you know, I wouldn't say, you know, you should be getting the parade ready and celebrating like that. But definitely good cause for optimism. And from a revenue standpoint, like I said, I think overall we're ending up a little bit better than what we initially forecasted. And as Andrew was stating, we think there's good cause to believe that that's going to continue into 2025 as well.
Okay, that's good to hear. It's good to hear. I just, yeah, like, I'm always, you know, when I hear forecasts, they're always on the bright side of things. But, you know, I want to make sure that like our forecasting and the actual results equate to, you know, better than what we forecast. That's what I'd like to hear. That gets the lawn chair set up on the parade route, so thank you.
I see that our treasurer has joined us. Charlotte, did you have something you wanted to add?
Through you, Chair. To, just to add to that, I think they did a great job answering. I thought the comment about parades was interesting. But Counselor, just in terms of property tax revenues, like when you talk about the impact of that, there is a little bit of a time lag. So I think we've talked about that before, that it takes M P A C up to two years to pick up the assessment on new construction. So what we typically see is we'll see building permit activity will start to improve. And then it's at a later date when we'll start to see that come through in our property tax revenue. So I just wanted to add that little piece in. It is a bit of a timing difference, but it is still something we look forward to.
Thank you very much, Charlotte. Did anyone else have any further questions? So seeing none, I have a motion moved by Counselor Brunet that Committee received for information, Report P D 03 dash 25 regarding the 2024 Building Permit Activity Report and the 2023 to 2024 Total Building Activity Comparison. I will now ask our deputy clerk to open the vote.
Thank you, Chair. That vote is now open. Madam Mayor?
Support.
Thank you. And Counselor Rajima?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor Timmers?
In favor.
Thank you. And I'm going to close that vote, and that carries, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Van. And thank you very much to Mr. Greenway for the report and for the good news. We are now going to move on to Item 7.2.3, Planning and Development 2024 Year-in-Review. Our Director of Planning and Development will provide a presentation. Matt, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, appreciate the opportunity to be in front of council tonight. Wanted to give some information, some of which we already touched on a little bit with respect to the previous report, looking at how 2024 was, some of the work that was done, some of the challenges, some of the good news that came out of it, and some other information pertaining to housing and where we're at, and other information that council will find helpful moving forward. So, again, looking at the key updates that I want to bring forward, just a little bit on the departmental structure, showing how that's all lining up, looking at what we had to deal with. Everybody knows legislation's been changing a lot over the recent years. 2024 was no different in of itself. We'll quickly run through that. Looking at, generally speaking, development trends, planning, application, and building department statistics. Again, I think the sentiment, you know, when we talk about some of the market and economical pressures as it pertains to the development industry, there's a thought that things have slowed down. You'll see through the numbers that, you know, it wasn't quite that way in 2024. The numbers were a little bit better than what we expected, so we'll run through some of that. Again, looking at some housing forecasts, where we are, where we're going, and then a little bit of a track record review on some of our significant developments that we had come through council in 2024, and finally, closing out with some key project initiatives that we continue to work on. So, just a snapshot here, and I know it's a little small. Looking at the team, what I really wanted to highlight here is just, you know, we have a range of responsibilities as you look through this team. Obviously, Mr. Barkway's team, municipal law enforcement, we're, we've got our officers. And here, we're missing one that we've replaced on a contract basis. She's just on maternity leave, providing a snapshot of that. We have development engineering, who essentially are responsible for reviewing all of our applications from a technical standpoint, inspections out in the field during construction. We have a lot of our, our planning staff and our policy development where they're not just reviewing and processing development applications. They're working on making sure we're keeping up with all the changing policy, keeping up with all recent planning trends, looking at ways to optimize approaches moving forward. And we have our building team. As Mr. Greenaway mentioned, we have one vacant position there, a Plans Examiner, that we will not be moving forward with filling for a little while, dependent on how our building permit revenues go. And then finally, we have a position that evolved, a planning position that evolved from our Prudhams project and now has gone into other complexities overseeing environmental coordination and climate change, and also some landscape architecture as it also pertains to development applications and strategic planning in key corridors and other areas. So, that is the team, a snapshot of them. I mentioned provincial legislation changes. All these things that are happening at the provincial level we're required to keep up with, reflect in our own policy documents and otherwise conform to. So, they've touched on a variety of topics, and we'll go through some of those. First of all, Bill 185, that was a big one that happened this, over 2024. Added in a lot of additional permissions, as-of-right permissions for additional residential units. Limited third-party appeals, that was a big one for all planning applications. So, now, it's really only a small group of interested parties and not residents that are able to appeal planning applications moving forward, minimizing or otherwise providing an opportunity to minimize parking requirements in major transit station areas, providing an opportunity for property owners. This doesn't apply to us as much because we have greenbelt Niagara escarpment lands in the town. But otherwise, if there are settlement boundary expansions desired by property owners, it gives them a mechanism to do so rather than having to wait for a municipality to update their policy documents. Making preconsultations non-mandatory. You'll recall, we did a lot of work on trying to streamline the preconsultation process before this, only to have this happen. But I can say, we still move forward with preconsultations. And even though they're not mandatory, a lot of developers or prospective applicants like that process because it's very clear in terms of what they need to do. This bill also added use-it-or-lose-it provisions, setting sunset clauses in site plans and subdivision agreements. We already have that anyway in terms of limiting time that can elapse before they proceed. And then some of the changes to the Development Charges Act, including things like removal of the FASAN and things like that. We also had a big one come through. This is, this is huge for planners, the new provincial planning statement. There's some big changes in there, especially around growth forecasting. We always relied on the growth plan, looking at provincial forecasts, which then go to the region. The region works with all the municipalities to determine what's happening in real time and allocates forecasts accordingly. Now, there's going to be a little bit of a change. We're in transition. So, municipalities like us that have actually gone through that extensive exercise recently, in this case with an upper-tier Niagara region, that those growth targets stay applicable. But moving forward, there is more onus on municipalities to look at their own growth forecasts rather than relying on the province. Or if they don't have the resources to do that, they can look at Ministry of Finance projections in terms of populations and things like that. Just a little bit of a different approach, but it does have significant impacts to planning documents. And then some of the other ones you can see here. I won't get into all of them because I think at some point or another, we've probably touched on them in previous reports. Changes to the Conservation Authorities Act. This one really was the result of a harmonization whereby all conservation authorities are now, they're bound to the same set of policies. So, it's a blanket approach for all conservation authorities rather than having each one have their own. So, it's just to provide a little more consistency and alignment throughout the conservation authorities. The main things, as you see here, nothing too, too significant. There are some definition and mapping changes, some permit application requirements that have been standardized, and in some cases, changing what is and what is not requiring of a permit. And then some other big changes. This big one in particular that we're going through now and adjusting to, we knew it was coming, but now there's been a proclamation date for the Niagara region no longer having planning responsibilities. This was part of Bill 23. For a while, it wasn't proclaimed. Now it is. It's going to be happening in March. What that means is things as, you know, there's a variety of things that we're going to have to take on responsibility for. And the big one that staff are working through now is we have to make sure that all the relevant provisions of the regional official plan are implemented into ours. All the municipalities in Niagara are required to do this. The good thing is, we had already started a process with our official plan. This just adds a little bit more to it. So, we're working through those. Homeowner Protection Act, that was Bill 200, that talked about, from a heritage perspective, the timelines for non-designated properties, extending those, and then providing some sets of rules for properties that had been removed from the list voluntarily in between when this legislation took effect and Bill 23. And finally, some more excess soil regulations that have been coming out, mostly in drafts so far. They've actually been a little more limiting in terms of what can and can't go on agricultural properties, but they're still in consultation periods, and we're not quite knowing exactly where all that is going to land. But we've had to keep an eye on it nonetheless. From a development standpoint, general trends. I don't think anything's unusual here that you haven't already heard. We have seen some positive progress that I'll get into, Mr. Greenaway got into. But there remains headwinds. More from a financing perspective, sales are still not quite what they were, which in turn affects financing of developments because lending institutions are a little more finicky in terms of when they're going to provide financing to start construction projects. Higher levels of sales need to be achieved, and that is still the case. But we are seeing some good progression, especially in low and medium-density developments. Looking at planning applications in 2024, you'll see a total of 196, which is up compared to 179 in the previous years. We actually had a few more come in from the time this presentation was completed till the end of the year. We were, we ended up at 202 for 2024. Eclipseing 200 is a pretty big deal. It means we're busy. We had, the highest in the past handful of years was back in, I believe, 2021. We were up around 219 then. You'll see a lot of them, a good bulk, as property information requests. But we also had a lot of Committee of Adjustment files. In fact, I'll get into that in a second, but it was, it was a high year compared to others for that. All the other ones you see here, zoning amendments, preconsultations, those are pretty consistent in terms of ratio for other years. And it's important to note, too, what you don't see in some of this that we tried to capture is we do a lot of informal preconsultations, too. We offer opportunities for landowners to come in, discuss their projects before they even get to a preconsultation, just to provide insight as early into the process as possible. So, we try to streamline it later through that. Talked about Committee of Adjustment, total of 56. That's the highest we've seen in the past six or seven years. Really, the trends there, it's a lot of adjustments to things like lock coverage and setbacks, which is pretty standard among other municipalities, too, looking at better ways to maximize usage of properties, underutilized properties. We did see quite a few consent applications, a lot of boundary adjustments, things like that. We saw a few surplus farm dwellings that were severed off of farm properties, which is permitted. And through all of that, there was a total of 20 public delegations, which didn't include the applicants, which, considering the bulk of the applications is not particularly high, we had some fairly big Committee of Adjustment applications come through as well. Wanted to give a little bit of insight into what it takes to process some of these things. Tried to quantify it in terms of hours. Some of this comes out when we did our planning application fees, when we looked at them a couple of years ago and made adjustments. We went through an exercise of trying to figure out how many hours are attributable to these things. Again, some of these metrics here, they are across a variety of staff. Sometimes it can take a lot of staff to process a planning application, not even planning staff. We have public work staff that work on it. We have staff from the fire department. We have community services staff, sometimes if there's a public element component. So, looking here, you can see that, depending on the complexity, it can take quite a lot of time for each application when you consider how many applications were received or that we do receive. So, it's just, it, it shows that there is a significant resource draw. And even for the planner on the file, it's a significant amount of coordination, too, with all other aspects or all other specialists that need to be consulted with on a given application. The only other thing to note, other than the time, which, as you can see for site plans, can top 120 hours, which is a lot, is that it also depends on the applicant team, too. There's varying levels of competency, of time management that we see from the other side of the counter, and that can have an impact on efficiency of processing an application, too. And unfortunately, some of that isn't within our control. So, this slide is just to highlight that, from a resource perspective, processing applications, it takes a considerable amount. Now, stealing Mr. Greenaway's thunder a little bit, but that's okay. He's gone now. The total number of building permits in 2024 was 417. That's a big increase over 2023 numbers. That's 37%. If you look across, there's a, there's a kind of a 10-year snapshot here. We're about, right around the average of all of those. You look at where the spikes are, 2018, 2019. That was when we had a couple of our large, really big subdivisions coming online. So, that was a big driver in that. But when you look at it across the board and generally speaking, it was a pretty successful year in terms of the amount of building, building permit applications that we submitted. Of those 417, 225 were to permit residential units, which is big as well. 57 were for non-residential. So, you're, there, you're talking about, you know, a variety of things. It could be, could be decks, could be pools, things like that. Oh, sorry, I mean, the remaining for the pools, decks, additions, repairs. The non-residential, I'm sorry, is for commercial and other non-residential uses, agricultural permits, things like that. So, moving on from that, we'll get a little bit into housing and where we're at. Taking 2021 census, there has been some, some units built since then, but still a relatively decent overview of what the composition of housing units are in the town. You can see we're heavily weighted right now with single-detached dwellings. You've heard me say this a lot, up around 80%. Then we've got, you know, a significantly less share being multiple semis, townhouses, and finally, a really small share apartments. You know, this trend has been changing a little bit in recent years. Obviously, you've seen the applications come through. We're seeing more kind of multi-unit developments go through, and there are quite a few in the pipeline, development pipeline, which I'll get to in a second. But in terms of ratios, we tried to look at, across the region, some of the numbers that are there. And you can see, we're a little bit higher in terms of proportion of single-detached dwellings compared to the region as a whole, significantly more than the province. But that's when you're talking about looking at all municipalities in the province. They, they all have their own unique circumstances. But the big one is, we have significantly less apartment units than, than most other places. Now, looking at the forecasts. So, you'll recall, many members of council will recall, when we were working through these forecasts along with Niagara region in response to growth plan numbers, there was a lot of back and forth about where we should land. And that was reflective of where we were at with development at that time. And we also wanted to ensure that we were properly forecasting so that we could secure enough investment in infrastructure moving forward. A lot of infrastructure investment from the region. Even for us, it comes down to what the growth will look like because that's where the need is. That's where the needs identified. So, we wanted to make sure we weren't being shortsighted and underestimating. So, this is the number that identified, that was identified through that process, 9,800 new housing units. And you'll see, the, the composition is kind of flipped in terms of what we're seeing moving forward. Again, that's pretty standard, especially municipalities similar to us, where there's already a significant kind of lean in one direction with the lower-density housing. You're going to see the other side come up to balance it. You look at the, the graph here on the right-hand side, and you can see permits issued by dwelling type versus projected annual growth. You can see where the discrepancies are. Obviously, we haven't seen a lot of the apartment units come through that were projected. But again, some of that, or a lot of that, rather, is we do have some big projects that are, that are waiting in the wings. They're just waiting for a little bit more favorability from a market condition standpoint. So, when you look at everything, you look at these new housing units, and you look at this forecast being out to 2051. On average, to achieve the forecast, we would need to see approximately 327 dwelling units per year between 2021 and 2051. So, now, looking at new housing numbers. So, I mentioned the number before. It was 225. 218 were for brand-new dwellings, with another seven where there was a demolition and reconstruction. Andrew, Mr. Greenaway, mentioned a lot of the units that are for this year were, were within a few developments, one being Benchmark on Mountain Street. We did see a few rental units come online or are coming online in terms of initiated construction. One's a 15-unit building on Hillview here in Beamsville. And then we've had two retrofit buildings where it's either a single-detached dwelling or other multi-unit building that's being further refined to add additional dwelling units. So, we saw one purpose-built rental unit built, or started, which is great. But again, the need demonstrates that there, there's more that could be had. So, all in all, as I think you're all probably concluding, this is a pretty, pretty strong year, pretty strong rebound, especially from the previous two years. And it's shown here. So, this is our, our annual comparison of new residential dwelling units. Now, remember, I mentioned that 321 or 27 units per year. You can see, we're not, we're not there very often, but that's not necessarily a bad thing because the forecast guides infrastructure investment, too. We're landing for 2024. Again, we're a little, we're lower than the big years, but otherwise, we're right in there with what the average would be. So, this is a good stat because it shows you that we're still seeing residential permits coming through. We're still seeing new dwelling units being built. So, aside from the units that have actually been started or building permit applications that have been applied for, there's a lot of units that are in the pipeline right now. So, about 6,000, give or take, that are approved in terms of having land use permission. Obviously, a big driver is, is Prudhams. We've got some bigger developments, you know. For instance, along Green Lane and Beamsville, there's a few in Vineland. If you calculate, if you look at this and you calculate it out from now until the Horizon year of 2051, all of this year, if they all went in that time, that would average out at 222 units per year. in that time, that would average out at 222 units per year. So we were there amongst this average this year. To get to the annual rate of 327 units per year as per forecast, we would need an additional 2,800 units. And that sounds like a lot, but keep in mind, there are other areas in town that are still earmarked for a significant amount of growth. You look at the main area where GO is, or could be, that's a significant spot where we've always planned to see significant growth. You have the Central Business District in Vineland. Eventually, we're going to see some growth and redevelopment there, and other properties and such along Ontario Street, another one of our intensification corridors, and even still around the interchange at Ontario Street on the south side. So, you know, it seems like a lot more to get to that 327, but really, if you factor it all in, it's not that far off. And again, I think we're in a very good spot in terms of forecasting, making sure that we've got the infrastructure investment on the docket, or at least, you know, on everybody's radar, moving forward as these numbers come to fruition. But again, you know, construction timelines depend on several factors, most of which are not in our control. We just try to look at what's possible, and move forward in that regard and make sure we're prepared. So of some of these developments, or larger-scale developments that went through council in 2024, there was a number. We had some challenging developments, for sure. Lots of input, lots of interest, trying to get to a compromise or a position where they could move forward. And I wanted to highlight some of these, because I think sometimes there's a little bit of, maybe not a misconception, but a thought that, you know, something comes in and it's reviewed and it moves forward. But that's not the case at all. And you saw that during these processes. But I wanted to reiterate, you know, there's been some significant adjustments to these proposals, based on what we heard, what we heard from residents, what we heard from other stakeholders. These three are good examples, Exit 64 here in Beamsville, at the intersection, QEW in Ontario. We saw significant reductions in height, in unit count, huge increase in amenity space, which we thought was important, because it's isolated from other things. So, you know, those are not easy things to achieve, especially when you're looking at what the planning landscape is, and what the province is encouraging from a housing perspective, and the pressures that they're identifying on that. We just had 4933, the Globes in Development go through. I won't go through the numbers, but, you know, big achievements, again, from a height reduction, a unit reduction, density reduction, but yet, parking additions, which, again, key factors. Not to say that, you know, I think we landed at a great spot, but it takes a considerable amount of effort and resources to get there. 4129 Hickson, we listened. We listened about compatibility. We listened about density of the apartment building and associated parking there, and addition of amenity space, and made adjustments. Then there was a couple of others, the proposed hotel on Main Street and Jordan. There wasn't really a reduction in density or anything like that, but we did work with the applicant team to make adjustments, architectural adjustments, landscaping adjustments, and providing additional opportunities for the public residents to become involved and have their say, way over and above what a typical planning process would be. Rittenhouse Lodge, that went through before the end of the year. Where we started with that one, I think some people forget, was a way different concept than what was actually approved by council. We went back in that case, said there was not compatibility with 140-bed facility with only 23 parking spaces. So you can see there was significant refinement and improvement in that project as well. It took a lot of time to get there, a lot of resubmissions, but we ended up, from a compatibility standpoint, with a superior result. Little bit on operational efficiencies. You've been hearing for a while about, you know, software updates. You heard from Mr. Barkway, G-Tecna now replacing an antiquated platform for municipal law enforcement ticketing. Well, we've also integrated cloud permit from the building side of things. That helps us with now completely digital building application intake. What that does is, that provides an efficiency for scheduling inspections, for making sure all submissions requirements are adhered to, without having as much back and forth. A lot of it's automated, yet there's a good interface with staff, should they need it. You can see the number here. We just tried to estimate time savings. And again, this is an estimate. I don't want you to think this is a hard and fast number, but you can see already that this integration of this software is bearing fruit in terms of finding efficiencies as we move forward and conduct our day-to-day from a building standpoint. I mentioned how it makes the process easier. I mentioned, too, before, that planning staff, not only are we looking to integrate the same software, which will provide even more opportunity for integration, increasing efficiencies that way between building and planning, but we also hold a lot of initial meetings. And the whole point of that, yes, it does take a little bit of time, but it provides guidance from the outset. We're able to identify what the major constraints are upfront, before an applicant gets too far down the line. Even getting things ready for a pre-consultation takes time on their end, so we like to provide them with that early guidance. And we find, on a lot of occasions, not all the time, but a lot, it improves the process once they actually make a submission. I'll just end with a couple of key projects and initiatives the department undertook, or are undertaking. Official plan update, I mentioned that. Initial, we were hoping to have a final official plan before council this month, but I could tell you, things like that new provincial planning statement, things like now the proclamation date for the region losing their planning responsibilities has, for lack of a better term, muddied the waters from finalizing that. We're working through it now, but it's required a little bit more time. But we do expect to be bringing it forward for you shortly, for consideration. Short-term accommodation business licensing, that was completed last year. We're in the educational period now, but our full enforcement period is starting in March. And we've already had a good amount of applications starting to come in. Staff are processing those. Customization and refinement of our GIS platform. For a while, we were using an antiquated one that was out of touch with most other municipalities, including the region. Now, we've switched on to an ESRI platform. We've been customizing the mapping to work with our needs. That's been ongoing. It's cross-departmental, working with Director Graham's team and others to try to get that to a good place. We've been working with the region, too, because the region, even though they're going to lose their planning responsibilities, there's still some things that remain under their purview, regional infrastructure, regional roads, things like that. So making sure that the process allows for that collaboration where it makes sense, but otherwise, efficient handing over of responsibilities to us. Development charge study, that was completed at the beginning of the year, and ongoing work with our urban tree canopy working group, and mini forest planting initiatives that we've been undertaking, looking at promotional materials, bringing awareness, and working towards a better protection of our urban tree canopy. So that marks the end of my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Director Bruder. I'll open up the floor. Do any of committee have questions they would like to ask? I see Diane Orenchema.
Thank you, Chair Murray, and thank you, Matt, for the comprehensive report and all the information. I have a couple of questions. One is, on your slide number 11 of your presentation, you said that there's been a total of 56 Committee of Adjustment applications submitted, consisting of 25 minor variance applications and 31 consent applications. A lot of the minor variance ones were for a lot coverage and interior side yard, et cetera, increased height and reduced parking requirements. So my question is, for additional dwelling units, has there been anybody that's come forward with an application to reduce the required parking for, you know, one or two additional dwelling units, or one? And how is that treated at the counter? And if there has been any, how did that go at the Committee of Adjustment?
Through you, Madam Chair. There hasn't been any, councillor, in terms of reduced parking allowances for additional secondary residential units. They're all, anyone that has been constructed or applied for hasn't needed that relief. Most of the ones about parking is more the multi-unit developments, maybe looking at things, for example, like a stacked townhouse that operates more like an apartment unit than a traditional townhouse, and trying to get the parking numbers right there. Or maybe certain instances where there might be a shared parking opportunity in like a smaller mixed-use development, things like that, not additional dwelling units.
Okay, thank you. My other question is, so you're talking about pre-consultation meetings no longer being mandatory, and you said they're a good idea. I agree, they're a good idea. A lot of people, I think, have become accustomed to them and understand the value of them, especially when you get formal feedback. You know exactly what the requirements are of the municipality. And I think it's great that you will have, you know, sort of unofficial pre-consultation meetings, also, all very valuable. I don't know this. Do we apply the pre-consultation fee to subsequent application fees? In other words, what is our pre-consultation fee? I don't know. Let's say it's $1,000 or $1,100. I don't know. Does an applicant, if they move forward to submit an application following the pre-consultation, is that application fee, in other words, do they get it back? Is it applied toward their application fee?
Through you, Madam Chair. That's a good question, because that's what we used to do, councillor. We used to have a smaller fee, and if they moved forward, then that fee would be refunded. In this case, recognizing, again, you saw the resource draw from the planning applications that we get. And when you look at those numbers, and you look at the time required in the staff complement, we realize that it probably wasn't a good idea, nor was it consistent with what other municipalities are doing. So now, the pre-consultation fee, which I believe is right around what you said it is, around $1,000, that is not refundable.
Okay. And that's a staff time thing?
Through you, Madam Chair. That's exactly right. It's to account for staff time.
Okay, thank you. And I have one more question. Tourism accommodations. So we have Lincoln Lakeview. These are approved developments, Lincoln Lakeview, the Jordan Hotel, and the Globes in Development. Do you know, that sounds like a lot, it probably is a lot, but do we know, is that enough, do you think, to accommodate all the hopeful amount of tourism that we're shooting for in the future?
Through you, Madam Chair. I think it depends on who you're asking. If Director Diani were answering the question, he'd probably say there's no such thing as enough. We want to encourage tourism as much as we can. I would say it's a good start. I think there's definitely a demand for even more than that, when you look at the town as a whole, especially given our geographic distribution and what we have to offer, you know, the amount of wineries and other things, bringing people into the town. I would say it's a good start, but there's probably room to grow that sector even more. And we have land use permissions in other areas, even such as prudums, to see that happen. So, I don't know if Director Diani has anything to add to that, but that'd be my opinion.
Director Diani, do you have anything else you'd like to say?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just to dovetail in terms of what Director Bruder indicated, I think he hit the nail on the head. I mean, when we talk about capacity, our tourism sector has more to give and more investments to seek. So, I think he hit the nail on the head. You know, we can always welcome more tourism accommodations, and we're always looking forward to further investments and working with those that have already been approved by council. So, thank you.
Thank you. And we're also seeing, you know, ones as Counselor Patrick Evers brought up earlier, on Brawl Morissette, and just the one on Fly Road. I can't remember the name of that winery. So, those are also tourism accommodations, and we're seeing those sort of applications more. So, that's good to know. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor. Councillor McLough?
Thank you very much, Chair Murray. Through you to Matt. With respect to pre-consultations, with respect to, you know, I think they're a good idea. You know, the province may say that they're not needed, or they're not required, but I think they're a good idea. But should we be concerned at all with some of these pre-consultations when developers are, they seem to, they seem to have the opinion that they're going to be moving forward with a project that is in a consultation phase. And I'm looking at like a possible development that's, that may occur on the west end of Beamsville. And, you know, it already seems like it might be moving forward, when it's, we haven't even seen that consultation, we haven't even seen that come across us as a council or as a committee. So, do we caution, as a municipality, developers on what messaging they put forward?
Through you, Madam Chair. The short answer is, we definitely do. Pre-consultations aren't necessarily a means for a municipality, especially now that they're no longer required, for us to say, no, that's no good, you can't do that. What it is, is we identify what the constraints are going to be. We identify what applicable policies are, what applicable submission requirements are. But we see many times that applicants, they take that information, and sometimes they revise their concept when they come in for applications. Sometimes they don't, and they would rather go through the first round of public consultation, go to a public meeting, see what happens, see what the main concerns are from the residents, and then take that in concert and revise their plan. And there's nothing in planning policy that says they can't do that. We try to advise strongly that, you know, this is something that's going to be problematic, whatever the case may be, whether it's too high, too dense, it's going to be a traffic, you know, the entrance isn't in the right spot, you name it. We do definitely caution them on that. But at the end of the day, that's where, you know, how they move forward is up to them. We're not afforded an opportunity at that point to just say, forget it, you can't submit. So...
Okay, fair enough. I don't know what, you know, what the methodology is, is if they're splashing or throwing spaghetti at the wall and seeing what sticks, or seeing what, what sort of feedback they're going to receive prior to moving forward in a more formal manner. I'm not sure. Another question I have is with regards to the Committee of Adjustment, and some of, I think last year, there was a, there was a few significant Committee of Adjustment items that were on the docket. And sometimes I look at them and I almost think, wow, that's a pretty big, significant Committee of Adjustment item. Do you consult with the chairs of the planning committee to determine, or help determine whether or not an item should be considered a Committee of Adjustment item, or should it come before council or committee of the whole?
Through you, Madam Chair. It might come up in conversations, but not necessarily. What I do is I look at what the general intent of the existing land use permission is. I look at the relief being sought, and I look at whether the general intent's being retained. It still requires a public consultation piece with the neighbors. So when I look at it, I have to tell you, most of the time, it's through a collaboration of staff, and my own discretion on where we feel it best. And there are four tests that go along. I think you're talking about minor variances. And, you know, that's part of our professional capacity, is to make the determination where it should be best heard. A lot of times, we do bring things before council. But, you know, when you talk about, you get the feeling that some things are substantial. They might be, but in the grand scheme of things, when you look at the surrounding land use, you look at the corridor they're on, you look at, is it a land use change, permission change, is it not? Is it more of a continuation, but a different form? All these things are factored in, and then we make a decision moving forward. So that's the way we approach those.
Okay. And I only ask that question because, you know, I have residents sometimes asking me about certain applications that are going before Committee of Adjustment. And I say, wow, okay, that's, let me look into that. Like, I didn't, once upon a time, I think it used to be dealing with air conditioners and on the side yards, and, you know, this sort of, you know, minor lot boundaries, but some are getting quite significant. And then, third question, if I may. When we're talking about, like, the number of hours spent on an application, time required, like, some people are just chewing up time, and, you know, you only charge X, there's a set fee. You're not charging hourly. Do you review applications, and do you say to your staff, or how do you manage that? Do you say, wow, we did well on this one? We spent too much time on that one? Do you analyze the process as far as efficiency goes, and as far as, you know, we could have done this one a little quicker? How do you manage that?
Through you, Madam Chair. All the time, councillor. I look at applications, a lot specifically around site plans. How many submissions did it take? How much back and forth? What are we asking for? What are we trying to achieve? And I look at ways to operationalize and kind of streamline that. So I am, sometimes you're right, sometimes the application fee, yeah, we did just increase them, but it won't cover it sometimes. And sometimes there's legitimate reasons, too. Something complicated comes out of the process we might have not have foreseen, you know, from a technical standpoint, needs more work, whatever the case may be. There's also some that go very smoothly and efficiently. Those nobody probably hears about so much, but they might come in a little under, maybe what our time allotment would have been. But I'm always looking at how long it takes, what was our approach, you know, how much back and forth did we have, and how do we minimize that while still achieving the same end we want to achieve. So...
Okay. Again, I asked this question. I want to make sure that planning department, your department, is making, you know, doing well, so financially. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor. Mayor Easton?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Mr. Bruder, I want to, I want to thank you very much for this report. It is a very complete report. In fact, I would say it's probably the most complete report that we've seen in some time. And I appreciate the amount of time that you've spent adding all of the extra dimensions, particularly those areas that relate to the response to public concerns. particularly those areas that relate to the response to public concerns. It is really important that we have our own standard around the kind of, the level of input and the amount of effort that we're prepared to put into responding to those issues. And so, my question to you is, in completing this report in the way that you have, did you feel satisfied at the end of it? That we're doing absolutely everything that we can? Or do you have some new, fresh ideas? Once the accommodations are complete for the regional involvement in planning, do you have any different ideas about how you want to move forward? Because as you've noted here, we certainly have plenty of construction that's going to be going on over the next 20 years or so.
Yeah, through you, Madam Chair. I think, you know, I'm definitely happy with how the team is performing. I think we punch well above our weight, generally speaking. General feedback I get is that, you know, we are efficient in moving things forward. There are things that take time, I can't deny that, as they do with any planning department. But generally speaking, we have a good approach. We try to maintain a good rapport and a working relationship, so there's no digging heels in, rather, there is a sense of collaboration. We're not always agreeing. So, I think overall, I am satisfied with our approaches to processing things and carrying out our workload. Our staff are competent from a policy perspective, and we work well with other stakeholders in that respect. In terms of dealing with what's happening now with the region, yeah, I mean, there's some things that we're already looking at, or in terms of all the construction that could be coming at any time. Mr. Greenaway mentioned, we've been in conversations with our neighboring neighbors, building departments specific, to make sure we've got, you know, adequate coverage. We can lean on each other when needed. It's a good relationship to have. You know, it doesn't mean that building departments are mesh, are amalgamating together, but I think it provides good cover because it can get busy quickly. Other things, you know, we're still working out, the region still does have some services that they can offer us. I've been before you before, talking about some of those things, some levels of expertise that maybe we wouldn't have. Most municipalities, our size wouldn't have. We can, we can leverage those specialties that the region has on kind of an as-needed basis. We're going to continue to do that so that we can keep other things moving along that we do have in-house capability of. So, we definitely have plans moving forward. We've also done things in terms of looking internally at how we circulate, how we collaborate. I'm always trying to think about better ways to do that. I don't have any new and fresh examples that are coming to me at this time, but I can tell you, it's in constant evaluation. But again, generally, generally, if you asked, am I satisfied that we're doing everything we can? I would never be completely satisfied because I think there's always room for some improvement, but I generally think we're, the department's doing a good job.
Excellent. Well, I think you're doing a good job, and that's just my own opinion. Madam Chair, you and I had a conversation on Monday at Roma about value-added agriculture and land use. And my question to Mr. Bruder is in regard to the potential for new internal regulations around soil quality and what should or should not be placed on land? And whether or not, and also approaches to how we could expand our industrial base as well. Are you thinking about those things, Mr. Bruder? And I don't expect you to provide an answer around industrial land, but what are you thinking about in terms of some of the ways that we as, who speak about ourselves as a Centre of Excellence for Agriculture, could start improving our own game internally by looking at how we're using land and maybe being more selective about some of those decisions?
Through you, Madam Chair. I think with anything else, it's a balance when you look at, we'll say agricultural lands and the value-add, things that come along with that, even the use of the lands for agricultural purposes. You mentioned excess soils management, which I think is a key component. You have farmers, in some instances, they need to improve grades. They have bad drainage, you know, it's a fairly common thing. They've got to try to adjust and adapt. So, you know, we want to be very careful with the soil that's coming in, but at the same time, there needs to be flexibility and ease to do that where it makes sense. When you talk about value-added uses in general, you know that we've done quite a bit of work already in our zoning bylaw and now through our official plan. The province is doing more work because they provided more verbiage in their new provincial planning statement that provides a little bit more of an open door for value-add agriculture. We're in consultation with the Niagara Scarpment Commission, who's also going to be embarking on their tenure year review soon, and will likely see some increased permissions from them as well. I think it's an opportunity to understand and appreciate that farmers need a means to diversify in some circumstances. It's not an easy industry. So, I think in terms of how we better utilize the land, we've got a pretty good evaluation process to look at where that makes sense. We've shared a lot of our approaches even with the region. I know they're not going to be involved in planning responsibilities, but when they were, we often find, found ourselves being supported by them. So, I think we've got a pretty good handle on that. You know, you talk about other land uses, you talk about industrial land. That's a little bit of a challenge, but I would also say, it's the be-all and end-all for industrial land isn't necessarily industrial land. There's other ways now we can provide jobs and other opportunities for non-residential. Whenever we look at any development that's of a mixed-use variety, we're trying to maximize those. So, these are some of the things that we're doing, but obviously, it's another one of those things that I'm constantly evaluating moving forward.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Mayor Easton. There being no further discussion, I have a motion moved by Councillor Pachariva. The committee received for information the Planning and Development 2024 Year in Review. I will now ask our deputy clerk to open the vote.
Thank you, Chair. That vote's now open. Madam Mayor?
Support.
Thank you. Councillor Regina?
In favor, thank you.
That's great. Thank you. And I'll close that vote, and that carries. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Deban, and thank you very much to Director Bruder for that excellent presentation and answering so many questions. Item 10 on our agenda is confidential items. We have no confidential items. Number 11 is committee remarks. Do we have any committee remarks? Seeing none, we will move to adjournment. There being no further business, I call this meeting adjourned at 8:57 PM. Thank you.
Good first meeting, Chair.
Good night.